Thank you. Please stand and join me in my council prayer. For mighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vouchsafe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prospers deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen. And before proceeding, I would like to acknowledge and pay respect to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community and their leaders, past and present, on whose ground that we are meeting tonight. Thank you. Tonight's meeting is a special council meeting. My name's Doug Chipman, Mayor of the city of Clarence, and I've got the pleasure of welcoming you. The meeting is being transmitted live by YouTube, and there'll also be a copy of the agenda on YouTube's website. There are a number of amendments to the officer's recommendation for tonight's dealing with the local provision schedule for the Clarence draft planning scheme, and we will work through those amendments one by one. And with that, we'll get underway, noting that Alderman Kenty is an apologetic. Could I ask for declarations of interest of Alderman or his associate, please? There being none, I move to item three, deputations by members of the public. We have ten altogether. The general manager will provide a brief snapshot of each. All Aldermen have received a copy of those, full representations and deputations, and they'll be taken as read, but I will ask the general manager to give us a summary of each one. General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you indicated, there were ten deputations, and in the circumstance of tonight, to give voice to each of those, we'll provide a summary. So I'll look through that summary list now. The first deputation was from Mr Malcolm Purcell, representing the oak tree group in Tasmania and the owners of 476 and 478 South Arm Lordedale. The issue raised is in regard to rezoning of the rural living zone in Lordedale. Oak Tree and the current landowners fully support council with the inclusion of the rural lot that is part of 476, 478 South Arm Road to be included in the recommendation to the Minister for changes to the urban growth boundary. Deputation number two is from Chris and Sue Johnston. They raise the issue of the Lindisfarne Ridge Rural Living Zone rezoning, and they offer their support for rezoning to low-density residential. Deputation number three is from Francis Beasley, and that deputation is on behalf of clients of Era Planning and Environment, and in respect to representation number eighty-one. The issue that is raised is in respect of 450 Rokeby Road rezoning, and they indicate that they do not support the proposed rural zoning of their client's land at 450 Rokeby Road, and proposes that the land be zoned general residential. Deputation number four is from Quentin Villanova of Capital Investments, representing the Jurius Family Trust, the Lambarkas Family Trust, and In the Pipeline Proprietary Limited. The issue they raise relates to rezoning of central Lordedale, and they offer their support for rezoning of central Lordedale to future urban, similar to the original status it had under the original Clarence City Council planning scheme, where it was zoned reserved urban. Deputation number five is from Mr Jonathan Blood at Loki Architecture and Planning. The issue raised is in relation to zoning for 469 Rokeby Road, and they request, they are looking for support to modify the draft LPS to consolidate zoning in 469 Rokeby Road to reflect the longstanding existing use of that site. Deputation number six is from Mr John Cleary, and that deputation is in relation to the Lindisfarne Ridge Rural Living Zone slash Flagstaff Gully rezoning, and they are supporting rezoning to low-density residential in that area. Deputation number seven is from Sam and Rachel Sammett, and again, in relation to Lindisfarne Ridge Rural Living Zone slash Flagstaff Gully rezoning, and they offer their support for rezoning to low-density residential. Deputation number eight is from Alex Brownley of GH&amp;D, representing the Jurius Family Trust, Lambarkas Family Trust, and In the Pipeline Proprietary Limited, regarding the rezoning of central Lordedale, again, seeking support for the rezoning of central Lordedale to future urban. Deputation number nine is from Alison Dunn and Gerry Gregor, in respect to Lindisfarne Ridge Rural Living Zone slash Flagstaff Gully rezoning, specifically representation number eighty-three, supporting rezoning to low-density residential in that area. Deputation number ten is from Suzanne Hovington, raising a number of issues related to rezoning of the land at 424 South Arm Road, Lordedale, and 25 Acton Road, Acton Park, from rural living to community purpose, and then raising a range of issues not directly related to the LPS considerations in respect to four and six Ringwood Road, 26 Manata Street, 514 and 526 South Arm Road, and sixteen and thirty-six North Terrace, Lordedale. And that concludes the summary. Mayor?
Thank you, General Manager. We now move on to item four, the draft Clarence local provision schedule, and for that, I need to advise that we are sitting as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. If I could...
Just a question relating to one of the deputations on...
Certainly.
So with all of the meetings...
Look, in the interests of progressing this as quickly as possible, I'm happy to take...
Yeah, just that the original representation to us on 450 Rokeby Road for the quarry related to a recommendation to move it to general residential plus open space, and the representation of her tonight doesn't make any reference to open space at all, so I'm wondering whether Alderman James is aware of that change, and if so, does he intend to change his alternate recommendation?
Well, I guess that will be revealed as we move.
Just a question, though, to clarify that they were not asking for a double open space on their deputation, so if... Because they were summarised, they weren't read out, so I just want to make sure that...
I think it relates to, I think Alderman Mulder, I think it relates to deputation number three, and that was the deputation from Francis Beasley of Era Planning, and just scanning through that...
Is there is open space there?
Yes, in the first, yes, sorry, we've admitted the reference to open space, so that should be included, so...
Thank you for the clarification.
That was why it was important to ask it now.
It was, thank you. The way we'll proceed with this is if we can have the officer's recommendation on the table with a mover and a seconder, the mover and seconder would have the chance to speak to that, and then the floor will be open for amendments and proposed amendments in a normal way, and will obviously require each amendment to be moved and seconded and debated, and then voted on, and with amendments, there's no right of reply at the conclusion of a debate. So if I could have a mover for the officer's recommendation, please? It should be someone who doesn't pose an amendment.
Good definition.
Yes, it limited.
Alderman Walker, thank you. Has moved it or seconded? You have moved it?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, we'll take Alderman Tong as the seconder, Alderman Walker as the mover. Alderman Walker.
Before us, we have the comprehensive document tonight, that is the structure and the nature of this meeting. I'm moving this motion. I heartfully recommend it as current form, and seek amendment accordingly.
Thank you. Would you speak a second?
I'd like to use my right to speak.
Thank you. I think the first item there is, first proposed amendment is Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My amendment is in accordance with the amendment number one, to rezone the rural living area B to hectares on the zoned land in the Cambridge Acton Corridor to Area A, one hectare.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman Mulder, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder. This matter has been on the council's agenda for a number of years, and over the years, we have seen development on the Acton Corridor and seen different lot sizes, and prior to the Clarence Infra Planning Scheme of 2015, there was a proposal, and there was a number of proposals put up, and they basically were for the smaller lot size from two hectare to one hectare, and they were approved before the 2015 came into effect. The nature of this is because there's been a number of representations, and also accordance with the objective set out in Schedule One, and that is because the change would free up additional lots quickly without the need to provide additional infrastructure to address the current housing shortage, and also it provides that listing and heeding the representations encourages public involvement in land use and management. The fact of the matter is, Mr Mayor, there is in fact a line that is drawn down the Acton Corridor and also in the Cambridge area, whereby on the basically top side of the road, you have the two hectare lots, and then on the other side of the road, in close proximity to that, you have a subdivision with smaller lots, and you also have those number of lots that were successful in being able to be downsized from two hectares to one hectare prior to the introduction of Clarence Infra Planning Scheme of 2015. The proposal under the local provisions Schedule LPS Zone is that because two hectare lot sizes do not recognise the existing settlement pattern and earlier schemes that had been introduced, where the density rating was one lot per hectare for the entire Acton Corridor and the local provisions Schedule Zone and the code application because it was under that particular zone, the landscape values can be protected through the application of relevant codes, and the land is not suitable for agricultural use. I seek council support.
Thank you, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't intend to go through the reasons or repeat them once at all, and perhaps an overarching statement that I won't hopefully dare to repeat. What we are looking for, we are not rezoning or making a decision to rezon anything here. What we are doing is we are making recommendations to the Tasmanian Planning Commission, whose province has always been to actually make the rezoning decision. All we do is put our advice and our recommendations to them. Now, the purpose of this one, of this particular LPS thing, is an opportunity to comment upon community perspectives of the advertised draft LPSs. So that provided, so we are free to make any recommendations we like, provided that they meet the objectives of the Land Use Planning Approvals Act, and those objectives particularly poignant are that there will be community involvement, which is what's happened when they've been advertised and gone after representations, and that there will be cooperative, there will be involvement of all three levels, engagement of all three levels of government, including local government, and that's what we are here for, so providing we are reflecting what the community wants. The last thing when it comes to zonings is that they must meet, the proposed zoning that we are talking about must meet the guidelines that have been issued in relation to LUPA. And in each case, I think, if you look at the reasons, those guidelines are addressed, and this one in particular, I'm satisfied that the guidelines and the objectives of LUPA are being accurately pursued, and that if the community want that, then I'm happy to recommend to the TPC. It should also be recognised that the Planning Commission will, if it is minded, to take note of these representations, it may, it will then be required to re-advertise many of these things because the broader community has not been consulted on this proposal compared to the one that was originally advertised. So having put that all aside, I'm satisfied that this, that the alternative motion meets the requirements of LUPA and the guidelines for rezoning, and I will therefore endorse.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, tonight council is sitting as a planning authority to focus on a key strategic land use planning matter, and that is the lens through which we should view each of these alternative recommendations by an Alderman to the officer's recommendations. The planning officers have a detailed understanding of the relevant statutory and strategic considerations, including the Land Use Planning Approvals Act, state policies, the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, and guideline number one, which has been provided by the Tasmanian Planning Commission to help apply zones and codes in the drafting of the LPS. They also have experience with the TPC's approach to developing a planning scheme, and that's been gained through being conversant and involved with previous decisions, panel hearings, and practice notes. On an ongoing basis, they've been provided with directions from and discussions with the TPC officers leading up to the exhibition of the LPS. In reviewing the representations received from the LPS exhibition, officers have developed criteria to assess the merits or otherwise of each representation, and these criteria have provided consistency. From my perspective, these criteria are sensible, relevant, and fair, and I believe as a planning authority, we should be abiding by these criteria as we consider the Alderman's alternative recommendations. In relation to this particular Alderman's recommendation, the officers have gone through the representations and have determined that the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy is met, the guideline, the relevant aspect of the guideline is not. There's not a like-for-like conversion of the current planning scheme, there's an issue in relation to natural justice, and therefore the merits of the representation do not warrant a change. And I think it's really important for us to note the definition of natural justice as the officers have applied, and I believe that we need to use the definition that the officers have used right throughout this particular document in terms of looking at the representations, so we need to maintain consistency. Natural justice is taken to mean procedural fairness and due process, sufficient to ensure third-party interests are not compromised. In this context, they may be the owners of the subject property, adjoining owners, nearby owners, or the community more generally. Yes means that it's very likely that a particular outcome will be of public interest and may result in negative impacts to some people. No means that it is unlikely that a particular outcome would impact certain parties. The issue of natural justice is relevant to this assessment, as the TPC has historically not supported requests that have the potential to compromise the public interest without being subject to an exhibited process. So I think that's incredibly important that we keep that natural justice perspective in mind. The officers have said that there is no supply and demand analysis across the region, and that that is important because it needs to lead to a rural living Acton Corridor strategy. They also note that the previous Resource Planning and Development Commission decision rejected one hectare lots. They focus on the natural justice aspect, which I've just spoken about, and there's a history that shows opposition to smaller lot size and further subdivision, and they make it clear that this particular, all these particular representations don't meet the guideline number one, and they do not meet the like-for-like requirement. Importantly, they've also looked at the impact...
Thank you, Alderman Mulder. Are there any other speakers? Alderman Newington, and then Alderman Bomber.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I've always thought, prior to getting involved in council in relation to, seeing all the legal and the bureaucratic stuff that we have to deal with when we get into the chamber and deal with it in meetings and that sort of thing, that, you know, people should have the right to make their own decisions up to a certain point, as long as they don't affect other people, and it's quite obvious to me from the representations that have come through and the people that are affected have taken the time to make a presentation to us, that they strongly support the change to, through Acton Corridor, to actually change it back from two hectare to one hectare. I mean, the reality is, as Alderman James pointed out at the beginning, there's a line in the sand where a lot of people have got two hectare blocks and the other side of the road, people have got one hectare blocks, and I think that, you know, there's really no rational reason why that should be the case in my mind. If we talk about the natural justice side of things, I mean, the reality is we're never going to keep everyone happy, and suggest that we don't change things just because we might upset someone, I certainly don't think, you know, we'd ever get anything done if we relied on that one. I mean, all our planners mean well, and they are trained a particular way to go about their work in a particular way, and they're just doing their job, but I think that sometimes we tend to over-regulate some of these things, and I think giving people the opportunity, especially at the moment, to have access to the unearned or unrealised economic value of their land, certainly going through the COVID situation at the moment, is something that we need to take into consideration when we're making decisions about this one, but also everything else that we talk about tonight. You know, if we're ever going to get to the point where, you know, some people, the only thing they've got left to probably get them to retirement or get them to the point where they can even survive, and I think we've got to remember that one as well. You know, and then we also talk about the other issue that's pretty, you know, important and gets a lot of airplay at the moment is the homelessness and the housing affordability issue, and for us to lock up blocks even longer for any reason, you know, if we reduce the supply, even though there might not have been a specific study on the supplier of blocks or those sort of things out there, I mean, obviously, if we reduce the level of supply, that's going to have an impact on cost, and I think we all know that having, you know, less of a particular product or service available means that the prices are likely to be higher, and I certainly think that having more availability out there is going to help people a lot more. And the thing is too, the economic activity that we have a responsibility to be, you know, aware of and to be able to support, because if governments, you know, whether it be local government, state government, and federal government, if they don't have access to the economic activity through the rates and taxes that they receive, well, then we're certainly not in a position to help anyone out in other ways who might need our help through, you know, homelessness or any other situation. So I strongly encourage, and on that one there, I'd encourage any of my other fellow Aldermen who have an issue with the homelessness and the housing affordability issue to come up with another strategy that's going to deal with that, because I really, to be honest, can't think of any other way that we can do that other than increasing supply and the opportunity for people to use their land and take advantage of the unrealised economic value of that and increase the supply as well. So, look, I strongly support this change, and I think that, you know, there's still a lot of hoops for everyone to go through in terms of having their chance to have some input into the decision. There's opportunities for us to sort of come back to council and have to consider, you know, each case on its merits as well, so I think that, you know, they've still got to comply with rules and policy, so I strongly support my fellow Aldermen to support this initiative at the moment, and I would hope that we see fit to actually, you know, pass it, you know, because of all those reasons. Thank you.
Alderman Bomber.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, all colleagues, I'm very well aware of why we're here tonight, of what we're sitting as, and what particular lens we have to view the material before us through. But I'm also very clear, Mr Mayor, the role of officers is to advise, the role of elected members is to decide, and that's what we're doing tonight, Mr Mayor. And, Mr Mayor, I wholeheartedly support this amendment. It is an issue, Mr Mayor, you may recall, that was before us twenty years ago, when we were first elected to this place, and I've got to say, I'm absolutely stoked that in the past two decades, there has not been the supply and demand analysis that is often quoted as the reason why people cannot go ahead and subdivide their two hectare lots in half. This issue on mine, Mr Mayor, is right up there with Rosslyn Hill and Kangaroo Bar as to the level of community interest in being able to unlock their land, being enabled, Mr Mayor, to enact a sensible and appropriate change. We advise, Mr Mayor, that one hectare minimum lot sizes will increase density and maximise use of existing services and infrastructure. That's pretty clear. What we'll also do, Mr Mayor, is potentially double our rate base at very little cost to the ratepayers of this city. The change will be minor, as a rural living zone would remain, and the change will be limited to the conversion from rural living B to rural living A. Mr Mayor, this is a sensible and appropriate change, and I urge colleagues to support this amendment.
Thank you. Other speakers? There have been no right of reply on this, so the motion is, as depicted on the board, to amend the officer's recommendation. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Moving to mooted amendment number two. Alderman Mulder.
I will moot the amendment standing in my name, Mr Mayor.
Do you have a second, please? Alderman Newington, thank you. Alderman Mulder.
Many of the same arguments apply as to the last time, so I won't go over them again, but to be quite brief is the references to supply and demand analysis. I often wonder why bureaucrats, policymakers, would sit back here and say, "We want you to do a supply and demand analysis before you risk your money." These people who are doing these developments are risking their own money, and if you need to have some analysis of demand, can I suggest you just read the newspapers and listen to the current housing crisis? The secret with an oversupply of land is that the supply and demand are normally, will be orchestrated through the price mechanism, and if we're talking about affordable land, then we at every opportunity must try to create an oversupply of land, because it is the cost of land that is the huge variable, not the cost of construction. And we've seen that with widespread reports, for example, of when you stick a homeowner's brand in, right, the first thing that happens is the price of land goes up, not the price of building, because that remains the same. However, the builders like this council are the meat in the sandwich quite often with these decisions, and they get accused of upping the price of dwelling when in fact it's the price of the land that's been artificially upped. That's what happens when governments start interfering in the market and the prices and the price can answer. The other issue that's been made sometimes is that we're supposed to sort of second-guess the commission with references to, is this likely to succeed in the commission? That's not our job. Our job is to advise the commission, which what we are, the council, representing the people in our area and representing the people that have represented to us, all right, to make of that the best that we can, given the circumstances. And then we look at the other issues which relate to this sort of land, which is the settlement patterns. This land in this corridor is also a question of various kinds of settlement in these areas. Some of the blocks are sub-minimal. The moment you hear the word sub-minimal, there is a variation to the settlement pattern, as in the last one. And the thing about it is that, yeah, so, and if you go and have a look at guidelines, and I'm not going to read them all out, because we've all no doubt had a good look at them, if you have a look at the Rural Living Zone 11 on page six of the guideline document that everyone is supposed to be using, you will find that the majority of this land easily fits within all the criteria for rural locations.
Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just the other one there, I mean, the thing that we need to remember too is that if people decide that they don't want to go to one hectare on these properties, they have the choice to stay as they are, and I think, you know, in any situation like this, we, we have to give people choice over their own property, and I think that's what we're giving people here, and I think that's a critical thing that we need to remember. The other side too, to add to Alderman Mulder's comments there about our role in relation to... how we influence the planning commission, and I think it's really important that we, by making these changes, we are making them actually look at these things. You know, if we just sat back and said, "It's all too hard, no, we need to do another structure plan, we need to plan, we need more bureaucracy to sort of control our lives," well, you know, the people sitting back, and some of these people have been waiting, as Alderman Blomley said, you know, 20 years for these things to happen. I think we've waited long enough, and I strongly support my colleagues, you know, to support this motion, you know, pretty much in the same way as the first one that was up, or the first amended motion. So, look, you know, it gives people choice, it creates all the things that we think that we're here to help the community achieve. People want to live in these places and we should be allowing them to have that choice. And I encourage everyone to vote for this one as well.
Other speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I won't be supporting this alternative recommendation. As with the previous alternative recommendation, which was successful, the officers have made it very clear that once again, there's no supply and demand analysis across the region, which is important and necessary in terms of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy. Once again, the RPDC decision in relation to this area of Sanford is very much the same and not supported in the past. There is a natural justice issue here in relation to various people within this community who would actually not want to have their land rezoned. Because rezoning has a number of implications, and one of those is that rates increase. So that's something that needs to be taken into account. Also, in addition to the issues related to the Acton and Cambridge Corridor, in Sanford, there's actually a lack of reticulated services and there's a reliance on carted water. There's a concern of an increased load on the South Arm Road and the Wellington Roundabout, and there's likely to be an impact on the natural assets. And much of that is actually covered with the Natural Assets Code. I do think it's important to note the officers' experience in relation to dealing with the Tasmanian Planning Commission. And for this one, they actually say that the impact on the whole of the LPS is high. So I think that's something to keep in mind. And they also say that the likelihood of success of the alternative recommendation is low. So it's even more so than the previous alternative recommendation, which was successfully voted on, where that was actually a moderate impact on the LPS as a whole with a likelihood of low success. So this is even more of a concern if we actually recommend this to the Tasmanian Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief here. As I think was pointed out in the earlier conversation today, the chance of success, whether we do it lightly or not, we can't preempt a decision of the Tasmanian Planning Commission. That's not our job. Our job, sitting as a planning authority for the City of Clarence, is to make decisions based on professional advice that we then determine is in the best interest of the residents and ratepayers and the future of this great city. Mr. Mayor, an increase in rates only comes about through an increase in land investment. What this will allow is opening up further supplies, Alderman Newington's touched on earlier this evening. And surely that's got to be a driver for this council, allowing other people who are crying out to move to eastern shore, who at the moment are unable to afford the pleasure that we all enjoy. This will open up and increase that supply, Mr. Mayor. It will, as Alderman Newington correctly pointed out earlier, address in some way the homeless position. The issue that we all hand on hearts every once in a while, saying, "Oh yes, we're fully committed to making sure people aren't homeless, we'll do our bit." Well, here's our opportunity, Mr. Mayor. Here's our opportunity to send a very clear message that we listen to the people of Clarence, we are fair-minded, and we will support appropriate development in our city.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Look, it is pertinent to this, but possibly more pertinent to the motion that was just immediately received here. If you want supply and demand analysis, you can't go past the mercury supplement of this morning called the Hobart Living. Supply and demand driving prices and how it affects is laid out in clear terms and very clearly what it was for Acton. So those sort of studies can be nebulous, but ultimately the market is probably the strong determinant. And I would just be saying that issues such as the previous one and this one, in a COVID environment where people, or post-COVID environment, where people are wishing to work from home, and it's this sort of lifestyle utopia that has been created. So I will be supporting this, and I will end it there.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Edmonds.
I might take the opportunity to make some sort of broad comments, but they relate to this as well. First, I'd just like to acknowledge the amount of time and effort that's gone from both elected people and our officers, particularly Officer Ford and Alderman Mulder, to put all this together. I was joking with the gentleman before we started that this whole thing feels like a bit of a game of football where the TPC, you just pick the ball up whenever they feel like it anyway, or take it out of the goals and put it in the other goal. So while some of this has been a bit dispiriting, although I suppose I've enjoyed the debate. I think there's pretty vibrant points made on both sides of this original debate and this one. You know, so we're here, and I guess my approach tonight is going to be supporting up as much land as possible that opened up. We're practical and we're suitable. Now, there obviously are inconsistencies around the city. I do have to look at Rosney Park to see how inconsistent the town's city is. I don't necessarily think there are reasons to create more inertia and then retain those inconsistencies. So that would be my approach, supporting up, I think, land as quickly as possible, as much as practical. When we followed up a couple of minutes ago when we were debating the urban growth boundary, talking, I feel like the housing crisis and the approach to that is really difficult to solve when elected and undelected decision-makers, particularly in state parliament. You know, there are people who have passed the 70, 80% mark of their mortgage or paid it off or are on their second bite of the housing market. They're not people who, as Alderman Blomley referred to, chonge it a bit to get in or can't afford to get in because they've just been priced out. So I think there's been a few references to housing prices tonight and homelessness, which may be less related. But, so I think that's really driving my approach. TPC is obviously the next step, and I think a few Aldermen have touched on the fact that we're a link in the chain, I suppose. And the only thing we can really do is knock things on the head. Things can still go with them and then be knocked on the head once they get there. I agree with the points on the supply and demand analysis as well, that you don't have to talk to anyone under the age of 40 in this greater city or in fact the whole state to understand that that is 100% the case. And people are either drowning on their way up or they just completely will bust in and pain ran through their necks to no relief at all. So that sort of sums up my comments broadly on the topic, and there's wild support of this.
Thank you. Other speakers? There have been no other speakers. I'll put the vote for proposed amendment number two, as shown on the board. All those in favor? Against? The motion is carried. Moving on to moot amendment number three, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman Newington.
Mr. Mayor, I formally move the amendment as listed that, with the exception of 16 Kent Street, which should be zoned general residential, that rezone the rural living area B to hectares, zoned land in Lindisfarne to low-density residential. In saying that, Mr. Mayor, we have received a lot of correspondence from the applicants, from those that submitted written submissions this evening. And that was basically on the basis that this particular area in question is in fact is consistent with the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy because the land is contained within the urban growth boundary. Also, it's consistent with each state policy because the subject land is part of suburbia and has access to all services and is within easy commuting distance of the Hobart CBD. The land is not within a rural setting and not consistent with the purpose of the rural living zone. In one of the representations that we received, and there have been a couple from representatives in that immediate vicinity, one of whom has said, and I quote, "I trust that in view of the points I've made, you would seriously consider the rezoning of our rural residential land to low-density residential as requested in the submission by all property owners of the ridge." I quote it again, "I believe the future urban zone is meant for land that is not already identified as urban and land that lacks urban services. The Lindisfarne Ridge area is already fully serviced and well and truly within the urban growth boundary identified by the Southern Regional Land Use Strategy and is already designated as an area for urban densification." Now, there has been a lot of discussion in relation to this area of land, Mr. Mayor, over the years. And as long as five years ago, there was agreement that the change was needed, but nothing has happened since. Now is the opportunity for council to support those representatives and make the necessary changes so that we can assist in moving ahead. And therefore, I request council support to have the submission for rezoning. And that is obviously, as mentioned, rural living area B to hectares to zoned land in Lindisfarne to low-density residential.
Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I think Alderman James there, you know, covered most of the main points there. I mean, the only other thing that, going back to the natural justice issue here, I think this one area is one where we've seen that the overwhelming support by the landowners in this area is to actually support this amendment to allow them to, you know, change the land to the, you know, more of a residential focus and that's something that, you know, people obviously want to live in these locations. You know, the urban growth boundaries there, the services are there, and I can't see any reason why we wouldn't support this one. The other thing is too, I mean, with the, I know some of the council staff raised the issue of the master planning issues and some things about, you know, transport and having something worked out. I mean, I know we need to look at all those sorts of things, but we've still got the opportunity to look at that. But this is one step forward in the whole process to allow these people to start that movement to actually, to deal with it. And I think, you know, if I lived up in there now, and I mean, I've read some of the feedback from some of the submissions that have come in, I mean, it seems like, you know, the rules have changed so often up there in terms of them thinking they can do what they're asking to do here, and then the planning scheme changed. And, you know, I mean, I think, you know, what we've done to some of these people over the years is certainly not fair. And I think, you know, we owe it to them now to give them a chance to move forward and get on with it, you know, because of all the other reasons that I've already raised, I think most of them, and some of the other Aldermen have raised as well. So I strongly support everyone to support this amendment.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Blomley and then Alderman Piers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this amendment for us to see seeks to change zoning of Lindisfarne Ridge from rural living B to low-density residential. And like so many amendments, when we consider the seat of this matter, as Alderman James outlined, has been considered by this council previously. And it's my sincere hope that tonight, we make a decision that enables our city to grow and not merely yet again kick the can down the road. The 1998 council report targeting Flagstaff-Gully Global Area Plan identified the area for us to see for future residential development some 22 years ago. And in that time, Mr. Mayor, there were a number of ad hoc and somewhat idiosyncratic rezonings in the area. Tonight, in supporting a motion before this chamber, we have the opportunity to rectify this situation and deliver natural justice for all affected landowners. As we know, the subject land is well and truly within the urban growth boundary of the Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy and is designated as an area for urban densification. Now, one of the primary thrusts of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy is to increase the density of fully serviced land in close proximity to key activity areas. Now, in this case, Mr. Mayor, the land is part of suburbia. It has access to all services. It is close to both the Lindisfarne Activity Centre and the Rosney Park Princewood Activity Centre and is within easy commuting distance of the Hobart CBD with relatively easy access to public transport, linking with both Rosney Park and the CBD. So in a strategic planning sense, this land ought not remain underutilized. In fact, Mr. Mayor, it is my firm belief that we have a duty, a clear duty, to ensure that this land is appropriately zoned. In addition, as evidenced by the rezoning of Jove Court and Ferdinand Kent Street from rural residential to low-density residential, and the rezoning of 166 Begony Street and parts of 162 A Flagstaff-Gully Road from low-density residential to general residential, council has clearly adopted an incremental approach to this conversion over the years. Mr. Mayor, to be blunt, I more than slightly feel bewildered that this land is still zoned rural living. It does not have limited services and is not within a rural city. And moreover, it has absolutely no agricultural potential. In summary, the subject land is entirely inconsistent with the purpose of the rural living zone and must therefore, most fittingly, be rezoned low-density residential.
Thank you. Alderman Piers.
Thank you, Mayor, but quickly now, Alderman, I've already summed up everything I was going to say, so I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Alderman Blomley.
Mr. Mayor, the officers have actually recommended that it's rezoned to the future urban. And the really important aspect of that is that at present, there's no structure plan that's been developed. And that's required by the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy to actually support rezoning. So whilst there's a moderate likelihood of success as far as the low-density residential is concerned, there's also the concern that there's an impact on the whole of the LPS. So I think the important aspect, once again, is that we are actually sitting tonight to look at strategic matters. And once again, I would say that we are not focusing on the strategic aspect if we actually at this point recommend rezoning to low-density residential. There needs to be a structure plan developed, and that has not been done as yet. It needs to be done, and so until it is done, the officers are recommending future urban so that that work can actually be progressed. There is an aspect in relation to natural justice, although some other Aldermen have said there isn't. I think it's important to keep in mind that when Aldermen talk about that the community want this or the community want that, we actually have had only a small number of representations. For instance, with this one, we've actually had four representations. There's a lot more properties than four in this particular area. So that aspect of natural justice and the way that the officers have defined it is important. And therefore, I will not support this particular alternative motion.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Alderman Mulder. Mr. Mayor, I'd just rise up a couple of points. This area was flagged for intensification because it was identified as being suitable and viable for increased intensification. If you actually see it, they could be going for general residential rather than low-density residential. And it surprises me that that's not what it is. And the fact is that if it...
And the fact is that if the officer's recommendation for future urban, which is, you know, dealt with all this stuff, then you've got the situation where if they go for future urban, they could then come back with a general residential and the same provisions would apply. Now, the fact that they've gone for low residential is a choice of theirs to say, we don't actually want cheap by jail living in this particular area, but we want some space. So we want larger blocks. So that's the issue about the intensification of future use. That there is no structure plan, we have heard and we will continue to hear that you can't move something into future urban if there isn't a structure plan. Well, here the officers are recommending exactly that, moving into future urban without a structure plan in place. So you either need one or you don't. I would argue that you don't. And in any case, with this particular area, there are some very, shall we say, comprehensive things that were called local area plans that exist in this area. That talk about the traffic and the maintenance of the vegetation overlays and all the things that are now modern. And all that's required is for those plans to be revisited. And I would hope that council has moved away from pushing those sorts of things onto the developers, but that the structure plans or the updated area plans would now be driven by council to make sure that the area, it also suits the city as a whole and not just the particular landowners in that particular area. But I can say that the local area plan is in place. It exists. It only requires some updating. And on that basis, I think we should move with it. Now, we've heard about natural justice and, oh, we've only got four representations and that doesn't cover all the landowners. I'm not sure that is correct. I think the representations are on behalf of all the landowners, which is why it is separate from the other rezonings. Be that as it may, natural justice is served when, because all we're getting now is comments on draft proposals. And the community will have an opportunity to comment, should the planning commission agree with us. They will then not simply rezonate low-density residential. They will probably go out and do further advertising if there are property owners who aren't affected by this thing. And that will be the case with the decisions we've made previously. So here is an opportunity. Here's land that's been crying out for development for a long time, who everyone and his dog has said we need to develop further, and here we have an opportunity. Now, whether it goes into future urban, as the officers suggest, or whether it goes into low-density residential as what the owners request, I think that if we are concerned about over-intensification of some of this elevated land, I think we should seize the opportunity and give the owners what they want, lest it goes to future urban and they have a rethink.
Okay, other speakers? Okay, so the motion, sorry, Alderman Muller.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of interesting amendments before us tonight. This is probably the one that I've struggled with the most. And the bizarre thing about this is that I've struggled, in a way that I've been pretty much large agreement with every point that's been expressed for this tonight. I am. And I think I understand the impact that the residents are feeling, and I'm very sympathetic to that. And I think advancing it is important because at the moment, it is a pig in a poach. If that was going to be a zone for an area of land in the city, that's what this one would be. Because it's so within the inner and intensive sort of urban activity area, and yet some of it's rural and some of it's low. So what I'm agonising so much on this isn't because I don't think it should be advanced. What troubles me is the thought that it doesn't get advanced, the thought that it stays in this current form of a logical limbo. When we last did this, I think probably behind Alderman James, I was the number one gunslinger at the time, making changes happen. We were resoundingly ineffective at getting, at missing our colleagues that night, Alderman James, Mr. Mayor, I can assure you. So this is the agony for me. Irrespective, I'm foreshadowing that we, a motion at probably our first council meeting in September, that we put on the table the prioritization of the structure plan for this site. Because if you step back, I suspect a lot of it would and should probably sit in the general residential, I suspect. And I've heard that there is aspirations that elements of this from the landowners do, that however, there's a feeling that low-density is the achievable rather than necessarily the other. So this is some of the conundrums, but it does really trouble me, the idea that a submission might go forward for absolute density and not get accepted because it's just highly, highly problematic the way it is. I really want to see it advanced. I live in Robin Court, I know the area through that. In fact, there was a school pretty much adjacent to that area, which I went through for four years. And yeah, remember working with perhaps some of those people there forty years ago. Yeah, change has been a long time coming. And the agony for me, and what all the things in this decision process is, are we inadvertently, and for the best reasons, should we set something in place that might actually delay it?
Thank you, other speakers. In that case, the vote, the motion before the chair is as depicted on the screen. It's amendment number three. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Uh, first amendment number four is Alderman Muller. Do we have a second, please? Alderman Newton.
I too would like a water management break, but I guess I'll have to wait. Thank you, Madam Chair. This particular motion is very similar to the last one, except it's, the land occupied is actually, the land being proposed is actually adjacent to existing general residential. So the other one was a proposal to go to low-density. This one is to move from the proposed low-density to general residential. And the real reason for that is that if you have a look at the properties neighboring them, the kind of development, the topography, the land, the natural values, all those bits and pieces that go into determining an appropriate zone are already met by existing houses that are in the general residential zone. And it would be really unfair, I think, that if we move this land, which is slightly different to the stuff on the top, on the major parts of the ridge, which we've just discussed, but it's actually down there and significant parts of it have already been zoned general residential. And that, referring to what Alderman Walker was on, was, you know, these are these incremental bits and pieces that we've been engaged in for some time. And it's really time we bit the bullet and said, no, let's move that, let's make it available. And in this general residential area, you have the capacity. Now, when we talk about the housing market, and it's been referenced that, you know, people in desperate need of affordable housing aren't going to be rushing into these expensive blocks. And that's true. But that's not the way the market works. What happens is you create supply. People are on the up and up, who are secure financially, move out of lower-value houses and upscale to higher-value houses, creating a gap at the bottom end of the market where people can come in. And so you're increasing the supply of affordable housing by moving the current occupants out of that housing into these higher-area housing. So that's how the market works. That's how supply and demand works. And that's what we should be facilitating. So I'm supportive. I would urge support for this motion.
Alderman Newton.
I'll point, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Deputy Mayor. Other speakers? Alderman Muller.
Look, it should be general residential, I expect. I expect so. One C Robin Court, what was I, 30 Robin Court back in the house in 1990? My problem is, we don't have the structure plan. That's what I was talking about before, wanting to actually get done with certainty, to actually make this happen. And I'm foreshadowing, I thought it actually would be good to do that reasonably, so connections can be identified, and actually make this happen. Again, my concern is that the road to Limbo and inaction is probably munching ahead without that in place. So I totally support the vibe. I just think the way to get there is it cannot work.
Alderman Muller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a structure plan? No. However, as we know, Mr. Mayor, Lindisfarne Ridge area is already fully serviced, well and truly within the urban growth boundary, and is already designated as the area urban densification. So it seems to me that the only stumbling block, coagulating potential urban use, is the one this area has been defined incorrectly, I submit, in a planning scheme like a provision schedule. Mr. Mayor, as outlined in the submissions on this matter, issues pertaining to zoning and possible specific area plans were all addressed by the planning commission over five years ago. Although I was not on council that time, Mr. Mayor, I understand that there was agreement and that change was needed. However, here we are, five years down the track, and nothing. Nothing appears to have happened to enable this matter to be appropriately revised. So, Mr. Mayor, to me, the answer here is quite simple. The subject land from Flagstaff-Gully extending along Lindisfarne Ridge to Begony Street and including one C Robin Court, 164 Begony Street, must be rezoned from low-density residential to general residential. Simply put, Mr. Mayor, this is the right thing to do, and I urge colleagues to do the right thing.
Other speakers?
Mr. Mayor, I share Alderman Walker's concern. It may be that in essence, we get nothing unless we've got that structure plan. And it's very clear that Alderman Walker can see the issue of concern here. I note also that whereas the previous alternative motion actually has a likelihood of success that's moderate, this one also has that likelihood of success. But once again, they are both linked together in terms of that there needs to be the structure plan before we can move to the desired zone. And that is why the officers have actually recommended what they have rather than general residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Alderman Piers?
Thank you, Mayor. I support this to general residential. I think Alderman Walker is quite right. We don't have a structure plan. I congratulate you for saying he's going to bring it forward because this area is bounded by general residential anyway to virtually, you know, to the west, south-west. And so really, I might have been like some others. I thought this may have been picked up before, but it hasn't, but hopefully this time.
Other speakers? The motion for the chair is as depicted. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Moving on to amendment number five concerning rural living lots size Gilston Bay, Alderman Muller.
Mr. Mayor, this is a very similar situation where we have an area of land in the hillside compared to the others, where we have two hectare lots sizes. And can I say that...
Just ask for a second. Alderman Muller, thank you.
So in a sense, it's the same, it's very similar to Acton and Sanford. The fact is that this particular area originally known as Government Hills from a very early stage, I think, because no doubt it overlooks the original Bowen Coe settlement, that the area is fairly large in terms of hilltop, residential stuff. And the thing is that two hectare blocks in proximity to the city is a bit of a rarity. You don't have to go too far out. I think Brighton is characterized by many, many one-hectare blocks. And they're out there. If you ever said, you know, that there's an area where there needs to be that larger-sized blocks, it would be in places like Brighton. Yet there they are with one-hectare blocks all over the place, and here we are with none. This particular area, I don't think it's, you know, it's an appropriate area. It's, you know, and not all the landowners have been consulted, so there is. And I think this is where, when we say, oh, you know, it's a low or moderate or high impact on the LPS, no, it's not. If you look at the requirement, it's the implementation of the LPSes that's been impacted. And in cases like this, there would be a moderate or high impact on the LPS if this modification was to meet with some favour, because the implementation of the LPSes would be slowed down by the fact that we would have to re-advertise and we would have to put out to community consultation the proposal, which is a different proposal on which they were consulted before. So until that stage, we really won't know what the, all the other landowners who are involved in this, and all the others don't do it. But as a matter of principle, this is an appropriate area to come back to one-hectare lots. So that if the desire is there for these particular areas, we're not talking about intensification because the land and the topography doesn't suit that. But we are also looking at the capacity for owners on a case-by-case basis, if they wish, to increase the density of land and in such proximity to the city. We are indeed blessed that people can have one-hectare blocks of land so close to the GBO or the GBO city.
Thank you, Alderman Muller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some years ago, I supported, and a number of members of this council supported, the application for the Clarence Lifestyle Village. And that abuts, of course, Piper's Road, which is, I believe, quite relevant in relation to this particular matter. And also too, this council is well aware of the changes that the Department of State Growth and the council and the owners of the Clarence Lifestyle Village are signing up to making substantial changes to that intersection at Piper's Road. And also the road widening, that will happen very soon, and council is putting a lot of money into that, as well as the development off Napier Road. That's again, another road access off Piper's Road. So all that development lends itself to, obviously, making a change to what currently is zoned rural living on a two-hectare lot, to what has been proposed this evening to Area A, one-hectare. So it makes sense to me that really with this development, with the developer of that Clarence Lifestyle Village and the developer that is actually selling lots off Napier Road in the Gilston Bay area, that you have to move with the times, you have to have these changes, because already there is that development in that area, and therefore there needs to be a change to one-hectare lots. I like to quote again in relation to this, and that is, this particular change is consistent with each state policy because most are inapplicable while water quality and management can be addressed through the installation of reticulated services and conditions as appropriate. It's also consistent with the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy because the land is contained within the urban growth boundary. And I mentioned that a moment ago, as far as the development of the Clarence Lifestyle Village and the developments occurring in Napier, and also the joint venture, if you can say that, between the Department of State Growth, the Clarence Lifestyle Village Development, and also the Clarence City Council. So it's consistent with the rules because the land is contained within the urban growth boundary. And more importantly, Mr. Mayor, it's consistent with guideline number one, the local provision the local provision schedule, LPS zone and code application, and consistent with the neighboring residential areas. And I've just mentioned that. And it can be connected to reticulated water and sewage and is not hardly constrained by hazards or natural values or other impediments and any other issues that can be taken with appropriate management plans. I see council's support.
Thank you, Alderman James. Just to clarify, the screen's actually got amendment number four up on the board at the moment. I understand the computer doesn't have amendment number five?
No, it doesn't, thanks, Mayor. I've just realised that I've got two amendment fours and I'm missing amendment five. So I've checked and it's within your notes, so they're correct.
Having said that, everyone should have amendment number five in front of them.
I was just confused when you told me.
Yeah. Sorry for any inconvenience.
All right, so we are, just to clarify, talking about mooted amendment number five dealing with rural living and lots size Gilston Bay resum. Okay, so we've had a move and a second to speak. Are there any other speakers, please? In that case, I'll put the motion, which is not on the screen, but in everyone's notes. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Moving on to mooted amendment number six, which deals with 424 South Lorddale and 25 Acton Road. Alderman Muller, do we have a second to speak? Thank you, I'll take Alderman Gomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the problems with this particular area, and both lots are owned by the same owner, so we're really talking about a parcel of land in two titles, two addresses, but owned by the one owner. The land is bounded on all sides, or on three of its four sides, by zones that aren't part of what is mooted in the LPSs. And in fact, one of the problems with this particular block of land is that it's been lumped with the whole enlargement of Lorddale as such. And as we were about to discover once again, no doubt, one of the big issues there will be what do we do with the inundation? It's unfortunate that this particular block of land has been carried along with that. And it's been carried along with that in the original zoning was something like flagged for future residential development. But then when a planning scheme came along, the whole area that was zoned something else was switched to rural living as almost a holding pattern until we worked out what we were going to do with it. This block has been lumped in with that, and it shouldn't be. This block is elevated, it is between, between a school, which is a community purpose, which is what the owner seeks this zone to be, and next door is a commercial zone. There is every possibility that, you know, that once this land is rezoned, the education department may be very keen to expand its current holdings at Lorddale, which are zoned community purpose, because one of the community purposes could be a school or it could be residential lifestyle village, retirement village type arrangements. So the landowner has gone through great trouble and has engaged his separate planning advice because his is a different issue. So in putting all this together, and I know that for simplicity we decided to move to all of the areas, I have taken the point though, and in consultation with the representative, to say, this is different. This is inequitous that it be left lumped with other land, which has different issues to ones that with this one. So without going too much more into it, all I can say is that if you're bounded on one side by, sorry, if your boundaries are two sides major highways, your neighbour is a, is an education department school which is zoned to a community purpose, and next door to you is a commercial district which currently contains offices and is mooted for an entire supermarket, which we believe, and shopping centre, surely, you know, we can see the sense that this land should not be rural. It should be, have some either residential or community purpose component. And the landowner is very keen to make it community purpose so that he can proceed with taking advantage, as I said, of a piece of land that has no need for a structure plan because it has access on, access on to two roads. And I'm sure that, that access to whatever goes there will be very easy. It's in a reticulated services, both water and sewage, good road access, not subject to inundation any more than any other parts of Clarence. But certainly it's capable of drainage and in such, some respects, it's better than some other parts of the city that are already general residential. So I encourage support for this one. As I said, it is different to the other areas. And I stress once again, its history has been, of course, it's been lumped with the other issues in Lorddale, which, but it isn't bedeviled by the issues that those were dealt with.
Alderman Gomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this all point to hectare parcel of land really ought to be open and shut class. The land is sandwiched between the order primary school, which is own community purpose, and the proposed all estate, which is own general business. The land is clearly identifiable as infill development, but it has both town water and sewage. The land was originally within the urban growth boundary and having changed when the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy was modified to show existing zones without reference to future expansion. The land was zoned general residential, but inexplicably was changed to rural living. The implementation of the Clarence Interplanning Scheme 2015 failed to a T A light-for-light translation from the 2007 interim scheme. The land does not correlate with the criteria of the rural living zone, and the land has walking access to all facilities. Mr. Mayor, the land in question was, in the past, part of the future urban expansion area of Lorddale. Now with the introduction of the Clarence Planning Scheme 2007, which did not contain future zones, the land was zoned rural residential. Now, this was indication of its existing use rather than an indication of future strategic growth and development. In the development of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, the land was originally within the identified urban growth boundary. However, in amendments to the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, the subject land was subsequently excluded as the urban growth boundary was modified to reflect current zone boundaries except for identified greenfield development areas. In the development of the Clarence Interplanning Scheme 2015, the land was again identified as being appropriate for future development and was included in the general residential zone plan. However, because of the reduced urban growth boundary area, the final approval in the 2015 scheme then reverted to a light-for-light zoning to that apply in the 2007 scheme. As I outlined earlier, the land sits between properties containing Lorddale Primary School and the neighbouring Berlin Learning Centre for the North West and the existing commercial precinct directly to the South East. The directly adjacent land to the South East, while currently vacant, is earmarked as a site for a future Woolworth supermarket. The subject land is also much less constrained than other rural living zone areas nearby as it is less affected for the potential flooding or inundation. Most importantly, whilst implementation of the 2015 scheme was to deliver a theoretical light-for-light translation of the previous rural residential zone, the Clarence Planning Scheme 2007 allowed for a retirement village under the community living classification. Now, with this burning front of mind, it is apparent that the implementation of the 2015 scheme or in the implementation of that scheme, the use of development potential for the subject land for development as a retirement village did not achieve a light-for-light translation from the previous planning scheme. Mr. Mayor, to rub salt into the wound, retirement village is allowable use in both the neighbouring zones, being committed in a community purpose zone and discretionary and the general business zone of the state planning divisions of the Tasmanian Planning Scheme. Mr. Mayor, in the interest of fairness and sound public policy outcomes, I urge colleagues to support this amendment so that the subject land might be rezoned quite appropriately from rural living to community purpose.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Berta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't be supporting this alternative motion. When we actually look at the table that the officers have developed in relation to assessing the criteria that they use for assessing, we see that this particular piece of land, pieces of land, don't meet the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, don't meet the state postal policy, don't meet guideline number one. Also, the council decision, which is the last formal council decision of 1st of May 2017, this was land which was within the feasibility study and council determined that they did not, or it did not want to go ahead with looking at the feasibility. So from that perspective, that is our last formal decision as far as this land is concerned. Also, as has been pointed out, it doesn't meet the light-for-light conversion with the current planning scheme. And it's also important to note that with the feasibility study, the public consultation was very much that there were a number of residents that were very concerned about rezoning within this particular area. So there are natural justice issues here. And I'd just like to read from the officer's report in relation to this. And it's in relation to the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, urban growth boundary. And that is the key in this particular situation. It says that the land use planning approvals act requires that a local provision must be consistent with the regional land use strategy. The site abuts the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy's urban growth boundary to the north, west, south, east shown on map ten of straws. However, the site is outside the straws urban growth boundary. And the densities provided for, through the development of a retirement village are comparable to those provided in the general residential zone. In fact, it's a higher density. So for this reason, it's not accepted that a retirement village could be anything other than an extension to the urban environment. And on this basis, is not consistent with the straws or a council's Lorddale structure plan. And what is very important is it is noted before the proposed zoning would be acceptable under straws, it would be necessary to first amend straws' urban growth boundary. And this is an issue that we've been dealing with for years and years and years. And on the 1st of May 2017, council's formal decision was, we don't want to go ahead with looking at that. An urban expansion beyond the urban growth boundary is not only contrary to the land use planning approvals act, I'll repeat that, not only contrary to the land use approvals act, but has broader implications for strategic, strategic planning in a greater hoard and is not supported. So I can't support this.
Thank you. Other speakers? In case of the motion for the chair concerning 424 South Arm Road and 25 Acton Road to rezone to, from rural to community purpose, all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Moving on to mooted amendment number seven concerning the Lorddale rural living rezoning. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second? Sorry. Thanks, Alderman Newick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The matter in relation to this has been spelled out in the officer's report. But at the same time, the report that was referred to as part of the 2016-17 feasibility study went into some depth in relation to it. But since then, time has passed. In fact, we are now in 2020. A number of those comments and recommendations that were in that feasibility report have not been basically followed up. And therefore, their movements at the station, if you want to use that term, have occurred. And there is also now, I believe, enough support, particularly from those people that are seeking changes to, to the zone. And I'd like to quote in relation to the objectives of Schedule One, because Schedule One, and it refers to the fact that the site is well serviced with basic civil, social, infrastructure and public open space, cultural heritage values exist on the sites but not a constraint to development. And the objective set out in Schedule One are also concerned or referred to under Schedule One as it facilitates economic development. In the, the report that was prepared by JMG, and that's with regard to the Lorddale Urban Expansion Feasibility Study. And it is again referred to by the independent report that was prepared by Dejure, Stokely, Cowell, Kingston and Brendan landowners. And in that, the GHD report of October 2018, which is a couple of years later, was commissioned and it was possible that their lands independently could be developed and, if possible, an efficient method to develop the site. And I quote, it is also noted that the GHD report was commissioned to investigate the land at several, but not all of the properties represented in this submission, as well as several additional properties as detailed in the chart form. And the commissioned report by those landowners and GHD stated that the JMG report underestimated land sale prices and did not take into account any future increases in land prices. Also, the JMG report, construction costs were overstated. Filling was at a cost of $20 cubic metre, which could be substantially less at five. And the subdivision cost per lot was $50,000 compared to what they'd actually stated. The point that I'd like to make is, in fact, the request for future urban has a long way to go. It has a long way to go because there are a number of other, what we call legislative mechanisms that need to be considered. There's the Urban Drainage Act of 2013. There's the Local Government Act of 1993. There's the local headworks policies. And there's also Part Five of LUPA regarding, and there was an example in the Meander Council, example provided for infrastructure provision. Now, we've all read that email that came out today in relation to the Part Five. But the point I'm trying to make here is that this change to future urban has a long way to go. But this council, by establishing the groundwork and advocating that it needs to change, it has the existing services on the, basically adjacent to any of this development. And also, council has agreed to a rezoning of a small parcel of land in Manata off Ringwood or Ringwood off Manata. land in Manata off Ringwood or Ringwood off Manata. And that is basically a small development that has been obviously rezoned. And then you're talking about the other area of land which abuts it. And that isn't even being considered for what may be a worthwhile development of future, of future urban down the track. It just seems as though that this particular development has not been considered in the long-term strategy of this council. It's okay to do a feasibility study.
Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, this one obviously has been, you know, around for a while. And I mean, look, I, I look at, you know, it's a bit of a complex one for a variety of different reasons. You know, the issue that it's gone from future urban to tonight with the previous, previous planning scheme changes. And, you know, I think we've all had plenty of contact with the people involved in, in this process down here. I mean, the bottom line is, we can't leave it as it is. You know, I mean, pretty much the whole swathes of the land through Lord of Dile is pretty much an open drain. And, you know, we have a responsibility, either way, as a council, we're going to have to deal with that at some stage in the future. And I know there's been some officer's report and Alderman that have been around for the last time this was looked at as part of the old JMG report. We are going to have to spend some money down there at some stage to do some work down there to, to deal with some of these drainage issues that, that need to be sorted out. But the thing about this is, if, if we rezone it to future urban, well, then that's some light at the end of the tunnel for these guys to actually get together and cooperate a little bit better, which has and hasn't happened at different times up through the journey, to actually come up with some creative solutions to actually deal with these issues moving forward, which will end up improving the, the situation for the existing residents of Lord of Dile by giving them some, some, you know, looking at the whole suburb in relation to some of the inundation issues and drainage issues that they face. It, it gets rid of a hole in the middle of a, a community, which is pretty much, doesn't match the rest of the community. And there seems to be, you know, the fact that there's an urban growth boundary around the middle of it, that says that, that's not part of the boundary. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me. And the fact is that people want to live in these areas. People want to live near the beach. And we should be giving people the opportunity to live in areas where they want to live. And, you know, having lived down there a few years, I mean, I know why people would want to live there. I mean, it's a fantastic community of the beaches. And, and the community itself is, is such a great place to live for a variety of reasons. The thing is too, I mean, the cost of council in relation to, you know, and I wasn't convinced that the costs that were quoted would actually be as high as they are. But the bottom line is, we would have to spend the money anyway. And the reality is that this way, by giving the, the green light to the, to the owners to actually take this further, it gives them the chance to actually come up with solutions where the cost is shared with the, the people moving into the community, rather than being left solely with the, the residents who are in that area now. And I don't think that, you know, is, is something the council would welcome and whether the residents would welcome that as well. You know, I mean, obviously with more houses through that area, there's more rates revenue for the council and, and, you know, we, we would benefit from that as well. But, you know, the, the other argument where it's, you know, regardless of whether any development that happens, council incurs extra costs as well. And we do it because we've got to consider any changes to, to an area where there's a new subdivision goes in. We always incur extra costs, but we recoup that in extra rights revenue down the track. I mean, one of the issues where, you know, a couple of the landowners have come up with some creative solutions to recreate, create extra drainage using parts of the property to drain into the Lord of Dile Canal. You know, and I think that shows some of the things that will hopefully happen through the process of, of this moving forward, where they actually, like I said, can come up with some creative ways, you know, to fix the issues. But look, I just think that doing nothing is just not fair to anyone in terms of, certainly not fair to the, the people that want to, want to progress this further. It's not fair to the people that want to live in this area. It doesn't make sense to us as a council to say no, because that really isn't an option. We need to deal with the drainage issues. And I just think, you know, it doesn't actually, even though, I mean, there was an argument put forward today and some, some correspondents had said it commits us to doing something. And I mean, on one hand, I, I agree that by us signing it future urban, it, it does. But it still doesn't commit us 100% to actually move it all the way forward. We still have the opportunity, if we don't like what happens, or there's something that pops up, we have a chance to address it then. But saying no, I don't think is an option in this situation. And I strongly encourage my fellow Alderman to support this, this proposal because it's, this, this potential for wins certainly outweighs, you know, any benefit by, by saying no and just leaving it as it is. Thank you.
I'd like to speak to this and hand the chair to Deputy Mayor. I, I'm not in favor of supporting this amendment, and let me explain why. First of all, to go back a little bit, this ensure planning scheme of 1986, in that the area was indeed reserved and zoned as reserved urban. It was then identified as subject to inundation. The principles of development control of the area also stated that the release of the Lord of Dile area in the future for urban residential expansion will be dependent upon the provision of sewage and stormwater services and investigation of the effects of possible rises in sea level. Then, 2007, under the Clarence Planning Scheme, the area was indeed backzoned to rural residential, essentially because there was no provision in the scheme for future urbanization to be identified as a zone. So my starting point is, and in principle, I have some sympathy with the landowners who would like now to see it reidentified for future urbanization. I think that destiny is there. Indeed, I, and along with a majority of Aldermen, voted in favor of the council rezoning the land to general residential under the draft interim Clarence Planning Scheme in 2015. The Planning Minister of the day rejected that rezoning recommendation from council, but confirmed the government's desire to see the Lord of Dile Structure Plan updated and the necessary, necessary changes made to the strilus. The subsequent studies, which cost the ratepayers of Clarence north of $250,000, identified considerable financial risk to council should continue to support a rezoning. And on that basis, it decided not to proceed. I accept the business case may well have changed with the change in prices of land and differently identified construction techniques. The development may well now be viable. However, even a decision tonight to rezone the area as future urban will create the expectation that council now intends to progress the urbanization pathway, knowing the financial risk. And it is not true to say that we're up for the costs anyway. The costs are extraordinarily higher than they would simply be for us to improve the drainage system down at Lord of Dile at the moment. It is widely accepted as a principle that the cost of preparing land for development lies with the developer, not the community. Proper way forward here, and the right way forward, is for the developer to embark on a normal process rather than lobbying to have a rezoning parachuted into a new planning scheme. The normal process would involve applying for a change to the urban growth boundary, as we had at the last council meeting, for another application, applying for a zoning change, and then applying for subdivision. Each step would require justification from the developer, but more importantly, a demonstration that there is a viable pathway to prepare the land for development. While I remain sympathetic to the future urbanization of the land in question, tonight's proposed amendment is not the appropriate vehicle for change. I cannot support the amendment because of the apparent and evident risk financially to the community of Clarence. Thank you. Take the chair. Any other speakers? Alderman Piers?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I, like you, I'd love to see a certain people down here this change. But like you, I have serious reservations. Now, most of the Aldermen have seen one report, possibly two. We've had report after report after report after report. There's at least a page and a half of reports on this. And I'm afraid to say like you, I know there's going to be a very risky, high cost at council. Now, people can say, oh, yes, you know, the price of land goes up and everything else. But it's a very, very risky area at the moment. And I agree with you, Mayor. There is an alternative way to go. And I think that's more, more appropriate than council laying out, and what was it, $10 or $11 billion we sent in 2016? It's going to be higher than that now. So this really does concern me. It really does. You know, when I read this, I mean, I can see things that, that certainly worries me when I read the report. Now, look, and like you said, Mayor, I would like to see for certain people this progression. But I'm not going to support it under the way it is at the moment. I certainly agree with you. There are aspects of the developer complete to us, and I think that's the way to go.
Thank you. Alderman Moly? I thought you had, I thought you'd moved forward to speak.
I'll move forward so that my eyesight is probably more obvious.
Okay, I didn't realize.
So I can make notes of the next bit.
Okay, Alderman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I haven't used up too much of the council's time this evening. Mindful of Alderman Mulder's comments at the beginning that all we are doing is making recommendations and the planning scheme, planning commission, rather, will make the final decision. But I feel I do need to speak on this one. And at the risk of quoting, one of my colleagues at the last meeting made a very forceful statement that we, as a board of directors, I don't necessarily accept that title because we're voted in rather than appointed. But as, in our responsibility, we appoint the right people to the job and we trust their judgment. And we've been advised very strongly by our general manager of the significant financial risk to Clarence should this go ahead, and that we would be obliged to spend money. And it is true that we, we would be making that commitment, whether we wanted to or not. Tens of millions of dollars, good luck recouping that in rates. I think that that's a very unrealistic expectation. But I guess my biggest sticking point is that if we change, and if the TPC accepts our recommendation and changes this to future urban, we are giving false expectations to future purchasers. And I'd hate to be in the situation where the current landowners sold their property onwards to somebody who might reasonably believe that they were going to be able to develop that land. So I cannot support this recommendation.
Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, with the, running the risk of identifying myself, it seems I have to be as forceful tonight as I was last time. Because simply put, from my perspective, it just does not make any sense to have central Lord of Dile outside of the urban growth boundary. Absolutely no sense whatsoever. This area is surrounded by a residential zone, and it is important to remember that this land was originally zoned reserved residential. The amendment before us this evening provides an opportunity to restore that original status. And importantly, even if we support this amendment, there is still a significant amount, a significant amount of order yet to flow under the bridge before any change of use occurs. Excuse the pun. To be clear, Mr. Mayor, tonight's decision does not, in any way, shape or form, buy under ratepayers of our city to outlay any funds. And, Mr. Mayor, those that seek to peddle this misinformation really ought to have a good, long, hard look at themselves.
Alderman Blomley, I think it's wrong to cast aspersions on the motivation behind people. Could you please confine your comments to the issues at hand rather than to porters' reasons why people might have made them?
Mr. Mayor, personally, I must admit I was a bit surprised and disappointed by the reticence of our officers on this issue. Sure, we had a report from a number of years ago outlining issues with developing the land. But we also note all things have changed lots since then. Particularly, as you touched on, Mr. Mayor, population growth and land values. The landowners and their developers have been very clear, crystal clear, in advising us of their unambiguous understanding that a significant amount of additional work has to be, to be able to take you to outline clear solutions to some of the issues identified by the JMG report. Surely, as a council, setting as a planning authority, we should be finding ways to make things happen, rather than the exact opposite. On the possibility, Mr. Mayor, of using a Part Five agreement, as outlined by Mr. Brownlee from GHD, and is already in use in the End of Valley, I've read the general manager's advice, and perhaps I'm missing something. But I do not see any definitive advice saying that such a mechanism cannot be used. The argument that because our Part Five hasn't been used by anyone else, other than the End of Valley, that it can't be used by us, is, in my view, illogical. Rather, I submit the reverse more logically applies. If it has been used by the End of Valley without any problems, then surely that opportunity also applies to us. At the very least, I would argue it is worthy of more, much more serious consideration. To seek to dismiss this rezoning application without the benefit of the definitive advice that a Part Five agreement can't be used is premature and, in fact, is unfair to the landowners in question. My final point, Mr. Mayor, is to remember what we're doing here tonight. We are playing a role to put in place the new planning scheme, which we can reasonably expect to be in place for a generation. All this amendment does is to provide the opportunity for a potential future change to a more intensive use. But if we fail tonight to rezonate this land as future urban, we are likely locking it into its current ideological status for another 30 years. Mr. Mayor, I commend the altered motion before the chair, and I urge colleagues to support this very sound approach.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Water, please.
Go on.
Correct me if I'm wrong. When we talked about disclosure of conflict of interest earlier, and, and I'm not sure if this is relevant, but I raised it, the estate of the Baracus family. I am aware that Alderman Blomley considers Simon Baracus to be a close friend.
No, 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 no. I mean, it's not a good idea, woman. How do you think? How dare you? We're trapped now, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blomley, would you please sit down?
Different man.
Alderman Blomley. Alderman Blomley.
What a joke.
Alderman Blomley, if you keep interrupting me, I have to ask you to apologize or leave. Would you let me handle this issue?
Would you allow, Mr. Mayor?
Would you let me handle this issue?
This is, this is, no, don't give me shit.
Alderman Blomley, would you let me handle this issue?
I'd like to.
Thank you. Alderman Warren, it is up to individual Aldermen to declare an interest or not. It, it is not, in our purview, to question whether another Alderman has conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To that point, Alderman, Mr. Mayor, it is Lambarkis, not Bigarkis, for the landowners here.
My mistake.
This is, this is Cassia Connor, Rick Lark. It's disgusting. Absolutely. I asked, I asked an apology, Mr. Mayor. That was a disgusting aspersion on my character. And that led Baracus fame and the Baracus family.
Thank, thank you.
It's disgusting. I want to give an apology now.
Alderman Warren has apologized.
I want to give that back to me, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blomley, I reserve, unreservedly apologize for stating my name.
Alderman Blomley, please accept it without shouting back.
Oh, I'm being held. It's pretty simple. Alderman Walker, seriously.
Alderman Blomley, there has been an apology. Can you please restore decorum? I understand that you had a right to call a point of order.
I guess we have a maximum.
But there's no justification for shouting and yelling.
You be careful. Any action against you, unbelievable.
There's no reason for shouting and yelling and making accusations will deal logically, calmly and professionally.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other speakers?
This is a poorly behaved.
Look, are there any other speakers?
Unbelievable.
Alderman Walker.
Thank you. Should I put a fuel to the fire and say I consider myself a friend? I'm sincerely close. I'm Simon Baracus, who's not quite a relative this time. I think on this matter, I pretty much agree with the, the points predominantly so far were raised by the mayor. It's a lot of history on this issue. And honestly, preceding my time in council, during my time in council, the previous, including the previous one, the midterms, as well as this term now. And what's been raised, and I conclude the fact that the current state of land is, is problematic in its current consistency. And I accept that it's, it's not as, as good as, as what potentially could be. But it's a really highly problematic issue. Going back to the history course. Going back to the history course, again, I don't, there's certainly a lot of excitement saying this, but probably number two on the enthusiasm states behind Alderman James, sort of around the early term of the term before. I was around proceeding and advancing, trying to get all this land culminated to a better fruition because it's flat and level and it's close to services. And I was very gun-hoed on getting a feasibility study done and it was a fair chunk of money. And I think it was money well spent because we wanted to know what could be done. But then as far as this issue goes, people talk about pre-COVID, post-COVID or, or, or during. As far as my, my headspace on this, but there's, there's pre-JMG and there's post-JMG. And I, I heard someone refer to it as the old report. Well, it's only, you know, October 2016, so I don't think it's aged that much. It's certainly very comprehensive. And whilst there's some arguments around land values, some, some talks again, the GHD report around, you know, the cost of fill, et cetera, those things might have changed. But I tell you what hasn't changed, gravity hasn't changed. Inundation concerns haven't changed. They're with us and in some ways perhaps getting more complicated. Aside from that, I guess, one of the points I might do with this report is, it's, well, it's all, it doesn't give any ifs and buts at qualifications, it doesn't say the data was provided to us and we sort of tried to, you know, use what we had, this is the lay of the, the land. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not without sin when it comes to the occasional little bit of cognitive dissonance, Mr Mayor. It does occasionally creep up on me from time to time. But I've got to say, if you want to see some illinging cognitive dissonance around this table, what's really interesting to me are people that put their hand on their heart ten months ago and said that we all as a council must right now declare climate change emergency. Amongst that rank are people that are enthusiastically saying, this land is ready in light to have detailed housing put on it right now. That is some hardcore cognitive dissonance. The Part Five issues have been raised by Alderman around the table. And I listened to those matters and I listened to the elements around the end of valley. But I don't, or I'm not persuaded that they are sufficiently over and above the advice that we received from the general manager today. There are future liabilities that could be considered unacceptable risk. And whether you grew up in Clarence, recently moved here, lived here, raising a family here, working here, paying rates for investment property. If you genuinely intend to actually stick around this community, this wonderful community that I've had the privilege to be part of for some time now, who will be picking up the tab for the, the headworks and those significant things? It's, it's going for all the rate players. So I'm not, I, I'm not unsympathetic to the frustration of the landowners. I'm not, and as I said, you, you know, one of the ten most forces around this table in the pre-JMG world. But I have that JMG report now and I can't ignore the advice that it provided me. And that puts me in a position of being unable to support this operation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, yeah, for not to be too cognitively dissident. Mr Mayor, first point is the urban growth boundary, we've heard the discussions about that. And, and it's flipping and it's flopping and the way it's gone forwards and backwards. There was also a comment that, you know, we can't put this as future urban when we know it's, when we feel it may never be and that the land would be sold to someone with a false expectation that developed a livelihood. Sorry, that's exactly how the current owners acquire the land. They were under that apprehension and then things changed. We've talked about the urban growth boundary and how this council, hand on heart, on twenty seven, May 2017, said, we don't want to review the urban growth boundary, we think it's satisfactory. Well, I wasn't on council in 2017, but I certainly was here in council in late September of 2018 when this council, I think almost unanimously, suggested that an urgent review was needed of the urban growth boundary and that we would take that up with the like of governors and we would take it up with the thing. So that was then, this is now. And that's a recurring theme as we go through this thing. There has been too much focus on the history and as Alderman Moll quite rightly puts it, there is, there needs to be looking forward to the future. These reports are all based on the assumption that we have to get rid of the water, the excess water that's going to come there. So because we're, we're, we're pipe water in, but we don't have a capacity to pipe it out. Mr Mayor, I come from a country, I was born in a nation which is two thirds the size of Tasmania, contains two thirds of the population of Australia and is actually the world's third largest exporter of agricultural country, when a third of its land lies beneath ceiling. So don't talk to me about innovation and the fact that we can't do it. We're all talking about stormwater as if it's only, my only way of dealing with stormwater is reticulation. And these reports all are based on those assumptions. That, you know, that gravity will take the water down, that there is no other option. You know, we can't defy gravity. Yes, water does run up here and it's done ever since a person called Archimedes developed a screw which was capable of pumping water up into, up, up here. And that is exactly what this area really needs. We talk about climate change and this area is subject to a potential inundation from ceiling or ice should that occur. Well, should that occur, this would not be the first city and we can foreshadow that. We can look at engineering solutions to either detain stormwater and then pump it out when it's, you know, when, when, when the capacity exceeds. We can look at perhaps we're using that stormwater to, you know, for other purposes and moving it out. We've had stormwater detention proposals and I talked about Worksworth Park when I was the last on council. The plan there was to create a new sports field area there and to dig out and to drain that area there. We similar to Lordedale, stuck it behind Jumez as a thing. The other thing with the topography of Lordedale is that it is perfectly for detaining water because it actually has a clay base. So between the engineering solutions of being able to remove water, between the engineering potential of insisting that houses, there's already a, a, a high date there, or if you decide that houses need to be built on stilts above a certain level, there may be even a day where nature decides that this will be a much mooted canal estate for Lordedale. It doesn't have to be massive amounts of fill. It doesn't have to be, you know, that water has to naturally drain into the ocean. It doesn't have to be these things. We are really here going on about old assumptions and old reports. Moving this into future urban gives us an opportunity to look at ways in which we could innovatively deal with this piece of area, an area where many, many people want to live because of the lifestyle. So I'm just saying upfront, no, we aren't approving general residential. In fact, future urban, it might even be a low density residential. Or it might be that no one is prepared to stump up the money. Now, Alderman James was in the process of saying one of the things, we haven't settled any work policy yet. That's something that could come up. And if someone came through with a future urban and they came through with a rezoning proposal and their issues weren't addressed, then we could simply do it, we could simply refuse them. We could simply refuse to do the rezoning.
Thank you, Alderman Moll. Other speakers? Alderman Edmonds?
Thanks very much. It's been a pretty laborious decision, this one. Lots to read, lots to talk about, lots to soak up, to, for another time to miss. Obviously, we haven't, am I there before, but the, the, the points made in the debate, I think, being outstanding. And Mayor, I can say, I can see why you are where you are now with the way you have been there before, which we don't see very often. I'll really cut my comments short because I think we're starting to get worn out. But, you know, we, we had JMG, GHD, et cetera. I found myself scribbling out THB, which is too high a basket. My home and sympathy to the arguments put forward by Alderman Newington, Milo, et cetera, about this, about the fact that it's a recommendation. Yes, there's a pathway there that isn't great and I appreciate frank advice on that aspect. But I guess what, what brings me back to is that this is a recommendation to the TPC and it's one of the first steps on the pathway towards something happening in this place. And so, yeah, referred to a basket. I just think that there has to be a pathway somewhere. Just leaving the door shut here, I'm not sure where that comes from. I would appreciate your comments before on that, but, so, yeah, sorry. But, yeah, that's, that's how I've come to, to my conclusion and I appreciate everyone's contribution.
Thank you. Alderman Chaw?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I won't reiterate what everybody else has said. But essentially for me, it comes down to, yes, there may well be elegant engineering solutions. Yes, it may well be that the land price has gone up and the cost could be done a lot cheaper. But fundamentally, this is the wrong way to go about this process. So, yes, perhaps in future, this will become a residential area. But there's a much better way to do it and trying to put through this amendment into the LPS is the wrong way and I cannot support this.
Thank you. Alderman Bombner?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In 2017, I was the alderman who actually moved the officer's recommendation. And at that time, I was supported by eight other aldermen and two aldermen voted against the officer's recommendation. I think it's pertinent to actually just read out the officer's recommendation so that we keep in mind what that decision was all about. And I reiterate that it's the last formal decision by council in relation to this matter. And I totally agree with the mayor and the deputy mayor that this is not the right mechanism for us to be reviewing at this. The recommendation was that council decides not to proceed with the Lordedale urban expansion feasibility study and accordingly decides not to undertake an amendment to the Lordedale structure plan nor to seek an amendment to the Southern Tasmanian Regional Strategy Plan for the following reasons. The study shows it would not be financially feasible to undertake the development. The development of the area would unreasonably impact on the amenity of the area. There are significant constraints to the development of the area, including the availability of suitable fill as well as long-term regional traffic management implications. There are high-risk and complex engineering solutions required to enable development to occur. And council would be liable for significant and unredeemable costs in the order of eleven million for the infrastructure and management costs alone. There is no adequate strategic land use planning justification for modifying the Lordedale structure plan or the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy. But council advises the minister for planning of council's decision and the reasons behind it. I think it's important to note the mayor detailed that there was considerable funds put towards the feasibility study. It was not only council that put considerable funds towards it, the state government actually put funding towards it as well. And so, it was a matter that, once the decision was made, the minister accepted that decision. If we're going to relook at this, we need to look at it in a strategic manner. We do need to look at the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy and the urban growth boundary. We do need to go through that process. One of the important aspects that I've been focusing on tonight and reiterating what the officers have focused on is that aspect of natural justice. When the feasibility study actually went out to public exhibition, there were a number of representations put in. And many, many, many of those were actually against resigning this land, this area of Lordedale. So as far as I'm concerned, the process that we're going through tonight is not the appropriate process to look at this issue. We've had a climate change study done in 2009, which brought up a number of very significant issues in relation to this particular area. And that aspect of inundation cannot be overlooked. It cannot be just pushed away with the idea that there will be some miraculous engineering solution. We need to see the tangible evidence in relation to that. The other aspect that has not been discussed tonight is that there are a number of developers who are looking towards resigning. If it was one developer and that's what the feasibility study was actually focused on, even then, there would be a number of difficulties and a very large cost to council. But with the issue of several developers.
Well, everyone's spoken, so I'm going to put the motion as number seven. A moved amendment there, all those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Moving on to number eight. It concerns a site-specific qualification regarding community living at four seven six and four eighty eight South Arm, highway. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I formally moved that, that motion and in doing so, suggest that it's in keeping with the changes that is being advocated and I would seek council's support.
Thank you. Do we have a second there? Alderman Newington, I think. Alderman James? Did you wish to speak to it?
Oh, yes, sorry.
I'm quite happy to take it as a.
I did, I, I need to reiterate the fact that we, we need to make these, well, I think it makes common, takes common sense to see that this development needs to occur. The fact of the matter is that it has been some discussion that there is a case of natural justice in relation to this and that hasn't been at all, been any problems in relation to what other neighbouring property owners have actually supported or otherwise. And, and that has been spelled out quite strongly this evening as far as the natural justice and also how it, it falls into the particular criteria. I seek council's support.
Thank you. Alderman Newington?
Well, I don't have this much point rehashing all the arguments I've put forward about why I wouldn't support the last one. I think we all, you know, I think they're quite clear. But I, I'll be really interested to see how someone could vote yes to this and vote no to the last one, to be honest. You know, I, you know, being new to this game and first time through this process, it's, it's interesting. But, yeah, but I think something that obviously people want to live in that area and if they can find a solution to build a residential village here and people are prepared to support it, I'd be very interested to see how they could justify voting for this and not the last one. But, yeah, well, that's another issue. Anyway, thank you.
Other speakers? Alderman Moll?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, the clean-up, land equation is too small for rural use and is surrounded by houses, a hotel, a retirement village, a shopping centre and a church. We know that there is strong, there is strong interest from the significant national retirement village operator to develop villas on this site with an estimated construction value of twelve million dollars. I'm sure we would all agree that Lordedale, indeed, across the length, length, length of our great city, Mr Mayor, there is a dearth of retirement village offerings. The amendment before the chair. The amendment before the chair would complement the existing retirement village adjacent and create a wonderful lifestyle hub for Clarence. A hub and a lifestyle that I'm sure we will be proud of. Mr. Mayor, at the end of the day, this really is an issue that boils down to good old common sense. The common sense outcome is to approve the alternative motion and I urge colleagues to do just that.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman, Moller?
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is part of the area that we decided as a group we couldn't do future work with. But what I would argue is that, notwithstanding the arguments from before, that this is an area where a specific solution could be achieved on a small scale. In fact, it could be a demonstration of what is possible on this site. And the fact is, there is already a retirement living on one area. This is an extension of that kind of living. I see this as a, as an exception to the rule, not quite to the same degree as I saw the 424 South Arm Road exception. But it is an exception and here is a case where it is at the, shall we say, it's at the extremities where I've already developed land and surrounded by them. And I think that if we rezoned this particular land, if we granted this land despite its zoning a SSQ, then we would be only doing what is occurring around it. But it would give us an opportunity to perhaps test drive some of the engineering solutions on a smaller scale. So, I am supportive of this and I think that anything we can do to increase the living and to encourage a few more people to enjoy that maybe is a lifestyle that those at Lordedale enjoy, even those who used to enjoy it in a way. But I'm supportive of the site-specific qualification and even though council may not wish to build a general design.
Thank you. Other speakers? Well, I will need to put the motion. Is it on the board?
Sorry, I'm having trouble with the connection at the moment.
Okay, it's move to amendment number eight. All those in favour? The motion is lost. Moving to amendment number nine for Cadena Road Rural Living Zone to an lot size. Alderman, Moller?
Mr. Mayor, this one is one that the officers were proposing rather than like-for-like at Cadena Road, Richmond Road, to move it to rural leave from its current agricultural standard. My proposal is to take it that one step forward in line with some other areas there. This area is so close to a small village, two hectares is unreasonable, I think, as a lot size. So, one hectare, I think, is fairly appropriate. Now, I think that the representations have made it quite clear, we've had some interesting issues and discussions with this land, contrary to a state that occurred earlier on. And I just want to make sure we aren't laboured under apprehension. This is the land back around Cadena Road and Cadena Road and Richmond Road. It is not the land on Richmond Road where the owner actually wanted to have it as his own rural living. But it was a bit hard to argue that it was unsuitable for agriculture, given the fact that he's planted a massive vineyard on it. So, I haven't pursued that particular one, but this one here, I think, is an appropriate area. It is even, it's closer to a township and two hectares is basically useless for a lot of the people who want to do this area. So, if the land was his own, we'd allow some bidding of existing land into, you know, what was clearly on the urban fringe of a residential school.
Maybe it's a second to put? Do we have a second to put? Should have called for one earlier. Alderman, Newington, sorry?
Oh, listen, in that case I'll speak.
Alderman, Newington?
Oh, look, I think Alderman Moller summed it up there. I mean, as things change and the community expands and the residential areas through Cambridge, you know, certainly there's been a lot of changes through the area over the last few years, it makes sense to make better use of the land and open up the opportunities for the community to live in places where they want to live, in the sort of densities they want to live in. So, I strongly support my fellow organists to support this one.
Thank you. Other speakers? Okay, so we'll put the motion. As, this is number nine, as on the screen. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried.
If you're saying...
Moving on to number 10, Rosney Hill rezoning and simple site qualification. Alderman, Moller? Do we have a second to put? Alderman, Moller, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just for something completely different. This one is to do with the officer's recommendation that a site-specific qualification be created for the Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Area. And their reasoning is that the Rosney Hill Hotel Permit could not have been approved under either the state planning provisions, open space or recreation zones. Accordingly, without modification to the draft LPS, the Rosney Hill Hotel Permit could not be amended to the extent that could normally and reasonably be envisaged. An alternative proposal could not be approved and the proposal would need to be constructed before it could establish any non-conforming use rights. Now, this is a tricky issue because this is actually before the appeals board at the moment and I understand it's not going to be heard until September. So, the community is appealing the decision to go ahead with this application. The general manager tells me that if this motion is successful tonight, it will make his life very difficult and I apologize if that's the case. But my concern is if the appeal is successful, then this gives the green light to future developments. But also, it suggests to me that the decision was incorrect in the first place in that if the current zoning does not allow this sort of development and I says, however, under the state planning provisions, the recreation zone does not provide visitor accommodation beyond the qualification if for camping and caravan park or overnight camping area. So, this seems to me to be retrofitting a decision that's already been made. I can't endorse that. So, whether or not it has a chance of success, it's an ethical matter of integrity for me that I can't condone something that is retrofitting a decision that may or may not be successful in the appeal. So, I urge you to support this motion.
Thank you. Alderman, Moller?
Yes, I have some sympathy for the idea that, that, you know, we're sticking something on, we're further developing this picket night nature conservation area, which is actually a clear reserve, that the old scheme allowed us to do it, but the transfer of like-for-like, suddenly we're not allowed to do it. And so, therefore, we're going to use a site-specific qualification to make sure we can't do anything. I can understand the logic of it, that if the thing is approved by the development, worse ill if the planning appeals tribunal comes back and says, no, you can't do this, but you can do something else, that suddenly we're sitting here trying to stick a backstop onto something that we invest a lot of time and effort pretending to get it right. So, I'm not about, you know, trying to shut the door after the walls are bolted. I'm more about, you know, supporting the principle. I do have concerns that site-specific qualifications like this are being used to get around the planning scheme and that may have been the intention of the minister and it may be the intention of the planning department. Don't make a right.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman, James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is very interesting that we have a appeal in the pipeline and that is, and we've been advised that it will be heard in September. Now, the outcome of that, we don't know. We do know that there was a number of representatives who opposed it and there was an intense lobbying process that occurred during those months leading up to council's decision. But what I find interesting in relation to this, and that's why I'm going to support this recommendation, is because the fact that, that if this gets up, it still has to get to the TPC for ratification. And between this time, in this place, and the appeal process in September 2020, and I don't think that the TPC is going to, and we're looking at it August, September, October, November, and I, in my experience, these local area provisions, local provision schedules, are going to take some time and we may not even have a decision or the TPC may not be able to convene their board to consider the LPS submissions until late November, perhaps December. And by that time, the appeal process has been convened and this particular matter may be raised at the tribunal because it may be perceived that it's a way in which council is trying to sort of certify what they're trying to do and to make it a, a special specific qualification for Rosney Hill prior to the TPC making decision on it. And I would have liked this matter to obviously not be put forward at this time because it seems as though that it can be misconstrued by the public at large. That council made a decision, it has been appealed and there's been a lot of community concern about that decision. And then on the next breath, and the council is now trying to create an SSQ for the Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Area so that it doesn't appear to be outside what the purpose of that recreation area is. And by making a specific qualification, site-specific qualification, it really undermines, I think, what this organisation is trying to achieve. On the one hand, okay, take it to the appeal process, but on the other hand, bring this particular issue into the, into the discussion when, as I said, the appeal hasn't been heard and the appeal tribunal may consider this as not being relevant because of the timeline that it's going to take in order to get, to take it to the TPC. I will support this recommendation because I believe we need to support it because otherwise we may be seen by the community at large that we are trying to sort of short-circuit the system and be seen to sort of throw in this particular qualification when we should not be.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman?
Yeah.
Alderman, Newington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, first of all, I would want to obviously put on the public record again, but it's quite clearly on there that my strong support for the Rosney Hill development in general, I think was a fantastic thing for the community moving forward with some creation of some recreational space or improvements to a recreational space. And ever since that decision was made by this council, all I've heard and everyone that I've spoken to is that they were so happy that we actually moved forward with this proposal and I've got it on the table to actually, you know, have something that, you know, the community can truly be proud of in relation to what it'll bring to the community and so many benefits. Look, this, you know, I mean, this is a political stunt, this, you know...
We're asking not to assign motivations?
But if the mover is a member of a political party, I mean, it's a political stunt. I mean, I'm not saying there's a problem with that. I mean, that's fine.
Alderman, Newington, please, let's just focus on the issues at hand.
But, look, but the bottom line is, I mean, this, you know, the comment was made that there was, the community was appealing. Well, I mean, some people in the community are appealing the proposal, but I'm sure, like I said, I hear much more positive feedback from the community in relation to the fact that we're moving forward on this. And I mean, you know, essentially, I think it's, you know, a waste of our time and money to basically put this in for something that we've already approved and had a democratic process where we sat down, we went through all the pros and cons and we made the decision to support. And I think to put this in is, you know, like I said, it's a waste of our time and I think that we should, you know, accept the decision that's been made and move forward.
Any other speakers?
I won't support.
Alderman, Bonner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I actually think this is what could be termed a technical recommendation, if you like. And I was going to read one comment from the officers after they'd gone through and explained why the recommendation of the site-specific qualification. They note, it is considered that the modification outlined above meets the section 32 for tests on the basis that the controls reflect an approved development that will provide for significant social, economic and benefit to Clarence and the southern region. And so, this is, if you like, a technical recommendation. And from that perspective, I believe should be supported because as Alderman Warren has noted, we don't know the outcome of the appeal, but we have to take into account that the appeal may not be successful and that the development will go ahead. And therefore, we actually need to make sure that the developers are not stymied to any great degree. So, from my perspective, it is very much a sensible and technical recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Put the vote then. It says on the screen, move to recommendation number 10. All those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Moving on to number 11, which is concerns 450 Rokeby Road rezoning. Alderman, James, do we have a second there? Alderman, James, Moller? I'll take Alderman, Newington, first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to clarify what you said earlier and in the submission by Frances Beasley from the RA Planning and Environment, she did say that we do not support proposed rural zoning of the land at 450 Rokeby Road under the draft provisions. We propose the land be zoned general residential with the area containing the historic quarry site to be zoned open space for a number of reasons. Now, there is a history in relation to this and what has happened over the years is that the development was part of a proposal which, I understand, and I was a member of the discussion group with the Lynch family back in 2003. And at that time, it was discussed that the Nichols' proposal, they would have access off Miranda into the development that was being proposed for Glebe Hill in that area at the time. Also, the Department of Main Roads was involved in discussions and also facilitated the changes that were required for the development of the quarry and in fact, to have it rehabilitated. The quarry has been rehabilitated and the extent to which it has been rehabilitated is a credit not only to the Nichols' family, but also to the support that the Department of Main Roads has given to them on the basis that their closure or the road access to that particular property was to be closed and therefore developed. The other comment that I'd like to make in relation to this is that the site is suitable for general residential zone as it's located within the urban growth boundary and is fully serviced. It is envisaged and that is where the open space requirement and the zoning for open space together with the rezoning to general residential comes into place is because there is proposed, and this is part of Frances Beasley's proposal, it is that 10 to 12 residential lots could be achieved, providing lots which are slightly larger than the minimum lot size and are caused to accommodate existing site constraints. So, there is already that road access that the Lynch family, which basically in conjunction with the Nichols' family, decided on having that access...
conjunction with the Nichols' family, decided on having that access at the point where their proposal, and there is access through the development into the Nichols' property. So it's been proposed that there needs, obviously, there's going to be twelve, ten or twelve, that's the proposal, ten to twelve residential lots, that that the quarry be, in fact, be zoned into open space. If by any chance we decide to restrict that, or in fact, make some changes to it, the fact of the matter is that the former quarry site has been rehabilitated, and there are several examples of similar historic land uses being used for public open space, such as the former K and D Brickwork site, Givlin Street, Newtown, and the development resulted in high-quality open space for the community to enjoy. So there has been considerable development in relation to this, and therefore, there has been a lot of time and effort put in by the developers, and I'm talking about Glebe Hill, on either side of that property, and to remain it in a rural zoning just detracts from the whole question of why you would have a, a general residential in Glebe Estate, and then in the Miranda Glebe Development, that is a general residential. So look, this makes sense, and I think that we need to consider how the two can be utilised, the zoning general residential, and how a historic quarry can be zoned open space, and they have done substantial work to make sure that's been rehabilitated, and I seek council's support.
Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I, I'm in strong support of this one as well. I have got a full show alternative motion if this one didn't get up. There were some issues raised, and it was really only because of the issues raised in relation to the safety of the quarry, there are identified in the staff report about safety and some management and maintenance of the quarry as a public open space, but as Alderman James, you know, indicated there, there has been some innovative use of these sort of locations in, in other places, which have turned out to be really good uses of this sort of space, and also residential ones. I mean, if you look at, you know, Salamaka Square, that was pretty much a quarry as well, and that turned into something that I think we all enjoy as a community. But really, I think the, the issue here is all, all the issues that, that have been raised by the staff can be dealt with in, in future subdivision applications. And I, and I just look at it and think, well, you know, we're going to have houses that are really, some really nice houses being built right on the edge of the quarry, on the western side of the, of this land that we're talking about. You know, some, some really nice houses going up there, so it's got access from one side. You've got houses coming through from the, the Glebe Hill side, you know, it just wouldn't make sense to leave this one sitting on its own. I think, you know, we need to give the, the owners of this land an opportunity to, to do something with it, which is going to give people a, a location, which, you know, we all know has got some fantastic views down the river. And I would strongly support my colleagues to, to vote in favour of this amendment, and I think it would be, you know, some land that would, you know, create a great space for someone to buy and build and move into.
Any other speakers? Alderman Mulder.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be supporting this motion as well, but also, I think the one that is foreshadowed should just not be successful. Perhaps this is a question to be careful to ask for, you might just get it, because I think this is probably an underdevelopment of the site, and I'm not particularly happy with the idea of split zoning on one title, and although it wouldn't be one title forever, but, but the split zoning, and I'm a little bit concerned about the open space being a quarry face, which I don't think is actually what the purpose of the open space zoning is, given the fact you've got a fence around it and, and, and block people from going there, so I don't know how, it's open space when it's closed off, but this is what the representatives wanted, and they have a particular vision for this particular plan, and there's no reason, of course, they can't come back with a different one later on, but I'll be supporting this. I, I do have a few reservations, as I've mentioned, but in the end, this is a piece of land that has been earmarked as somewhere we're going to build houses one day, from the ear dot. Now, the, the extension, the work's been done on the rehab of the quarry, now it may not be up to scratch, but of course, that would be part of the development conditions, that things be done, you know, or completed to, to the next level of standard to enable this to be done. But I think this is a case of just leaving it as rural living and waiting to come up. A structure plan isn't needed, because the services are all there, it's a degraded old industrial site, it's a, it's, the access has now been sorted out, so that it's not off South Arm Highway, which was always a particular issue, and now the potential is for, for access from either side, and as I said, all the services are there. I think it's, no matter what we do tonight, I think we need to give some comfort that all their hard work, all their work they've done, all their issues really deserve a hearing, and we need to make a step forward on this one.
I wonder if I hand the chair out for a moment, just before Mr. Lovell, the question of a split zoning on one title, is that something that the commission would tolerate even, or is it within the rules to, to, yeah? Mr. Paul.
Yeah, thank you, man. Originally, the planning commission was reluctant to provide for split zoning opportunities, and their, their initial drafting instructions provided for one zone per cadaster, and we made a convincing case earlier on, and as you drew your point, was the best example we could come up with, with very large land holdings that had different topological features across the site. It was inappropriate just to, to zone it one thing. Do you zone the whole hill general residential, or do you zone it all environmental living? What do you do with it? And that, the petition was accepted. So they ended up revising those drafting instructions and allowing you to stitch it at a dual or multiple zones to natural features. So it was, became obvious you could do it to a creek way, or a drainage swale, or a particular contour. And it became, they gave more and more guidance on it, so you can do it, they're reluctant to it, but you need to be able to justify it to a spatially mapped feature. So you, you could, in this case, obviously, if it was up to a quarry face, that could be readily identified, but they don't want it just to carve up a paddock, it needs to be something that a surveyor can come along and re-establish on the ground if necessary.
Thank you. Take the chair back, I've got nothing for the day. Alderman Mulder.
This is an interesting one, this might have more than two goes as we go through this tonight. Uh, yeah, rural, rural next to a highway, rural three doors down from potential coal store, I don't think. I'm not going to do much farming there. Shouldn't stay in that zone, that to me doesn't make sense. But a capital H, however, we don't have a clue. We've been told by the representatives about the state of the quarry, we haven't had to take any geology surveys, we, we don't know anything about that. To me, that is cavalier to say that's public open space. The potential, other things associated with that could be astounding, you might enter with a public open space that's close to public. I struggle with that, and as such, that'll be the reason why I can't support this. I also struggle with the idea that we could say, oh, well, that's, we'll make it in a residential, and it's not that in, and it's not that out, but it's not really a high-urban vibe. This is the classic case where future urban could have been considered, because it's good for that, then we go through the functionality of it and figuring out whether what's viable and what's not, because it does need to move from rural, that is not the rational zone. This whole glorious show that's on tonight is something that I moved to get the whole thing well, and so I can't put up an alternative motion, and certainly look favourably if someone decided to use it in a future urban instead of this, this zoning that's there.
I think that's the foreshadowed motion, if I'm reading it right.
So, anyone?
Okay, other speakers? Okay, so I'll, I'll put the motion as presented, that it becomes split zone, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five. Against? Uh, the motion is lost, in which case Alderman Mulder, I think, Alderman Newington had a foreshadow.
Yes.
Uh, you'd like to detail that, please?
Replacement and recommendation, really up to. Yeah, hang on, same. Um, yeah, look, I suppose, I mean, if, if I take into account...
If I could have a second, a second, Alderman Mulder, thank you.
Um, well, if we take into account Alderman Walder's comments there, I mean, yeah, look, I mean, obviously, if, if we did go down that path of wanting public open space, all, like I said, all those issues would have to be dealt with in relation to seismic, geological, whatever type of, we'd need to do, we'd have to identify their own risks associated with it. But I suppose at least if we went to future urban, you know, the other thing is that we could look at alternative uses of that site that don't necessarily stick with what they proposed, which was the, what did they call it? The general residential. And then, you know, like, as I mentioned in my last comment, I mean, if you look at, you know, Salamaka Square, that was a, it was a resi-, a quarry, and they've come to develop that quarry site into some really nice apartments that, you know, and a public open space in a square that, that, you know, that people of hope aren't use, you know, quite regularly, and I think, you know, people really appreciate that, that, that's the other way of creating the public open space, rather than doing it as a natural area, it could be a plaza, who knows? But anyway, I suppose at least if that, it gives the opportunity for these guys to come back, have a look at the drawing board, identify some of these issues, and, and get a little bit more detail in relation to what they do with the quarry. If it could be turned into something like that, great, but at least it gives them the opportunity to, to look at all this, because I mean, I think as a few people have actually commented, you know, leaving it as rural residential just doesn't make sense. You know, it's close to services, it's inside the urban growth boundary, there's, there's access from both sides, and if we're all about giving people the opportunity to unlock the value in their land, then create opportunities for other types of housing that aren't necessarily four bedrooms, two bathrooms, two garages, you know, we might find some innovative ways of, of coming up with something different in that space, and that's up to them to come back to us with, with something down the track, but, you know, I don't think we should be looking at a location like that and actually leaving it as rural residential, because as Alderman quite rightly said, it's next to the highway, two hundred minutes from a coal store, so it gives them the chance to at least do something with it, and I think that's the minimum that we should be looking at, at today's meeting.
Alderman Mulder.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that future urban still allows them to maybe go back to, it's specific plans about the general open space, and, and maybe they do have some vision about the quarry could be used as open space. It doesn't have to be a playground with a fence around it that we don't allow people into, I, I can just think, you know, like active recreation, you know...
Simulines, rock climbing.
Simuline, all sorts of things. So, so, but I mean, that, that would all depend upon what they propose, so personally, when I look at it, I see the Salamaka quarries, and I see inner residential, and if you look at the guidelines for inner residential, it talks about access to transport, access to services, and although those services aren't quite there yet, there's a shopping centre, you know, planning, builders, Alderman Walker puts it three doors up. So it meets a lot of those, those requirements. The issues surrounding access to South Arm Highway, and I'll see we've got a representation on that, is actually moot, because in conjunction with the, with the road, and I think we've had this one going back to when I was on council, so at the risk of ancient history there, but to the last time, but that access is actually not going to be used, and, and Dyer have assisted, or Dyer or State Growth, or whatever their name is now, for the Department of Main Roads, has a lot to do with roads. The, the fact is that this particular piece of land is now going to be a natural extension of a connector district, through, from the DM Drive, is it DM Drive?
Yep.
Into North Terrace or something. So, you know, all those issues about road traffic and, and the access to the, to the highway are now done and dusted, and we're now left with what's the best use to make of this? Because the last thing I would like to see is that for the rest of our life, we're stuck here with an eyesore off the main highway for a site, and I think that the potential of building, you know, an inner residential apartments, terrace lines into that, into that cliff face, would be really innovative use, and it would give the landowners a lot, better lot use, I think, in some general residential and a cliff face. So it's an opportunity, but it's not for me to, to impose my wishes or desires on them, but I think by adopting this motion, against, against the other one, we'll just allow a little bit more time for some innovative thinking, and I fully endorse this. There's one thing that it will, that, that should not happen, we should not stick this with rural residential and with all the issues there is, there's no infrastructure plan, it's within the urban growth boundary, and, and the topography and stuff is just inappropriate for the use of rural living now, it's, the idea that you can, rural living isn't designed for agriculture, it's designed for living with a rural asset, with a rural thing, so in other words, you might be able to run a horse or something like that, well, any attempt to use this for a rural-style pursuit, it's a bit hard on the quarry.
Does anybody else need to speak to it? Like Alderman James?
Just look, I, I understand and I support the, the recommendation, but could I just pose a question to Mr. Lovell, Mr. Mayor, and that is, Mr. Lovell, when, let's assume that this, obviously this matter does come towards the TPC, would the TPC consider the representation from the company that's been lodging Frances Beasley of the RA Planning, and, and would the, the TPC make a contrary decision to what council may make in this instance as far as future urban? I know it's a bit of a hypothetical, but I'd just be interested to hear what Mr. Lovell...
Through, Mr. Mayor, we're given no guarantees on what the commission will say, but they will certainly receive the submission that has been made on behalf of the applicants, and they'll also get the chance to appear at the panel hearing and to, and to take it further, and, and there's a number of options that will be before the commission at that point, but I won't predict exactly what the outcome is, but, but it will have every chance.
Thank you. Okay, any other speakers? There being none, I'll put the motion, which is eleven point one, that four fifty Rugby Road be rezoned to future. Uh, sorry, I've got the wrong page here, get future urban. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Moving on to, move to recommendation number twelve, penultimate one, eight and fourteen Driftwood Drive rezoning from rural living to low-density residential. Who do we have moving this one? Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can we have a second, please? Alderman Mulder.
Mr. Mayor, the, the current zoning that's been proposed by the offices is for continuation of what the zoning is, and that of course is that it be basically maintained as rural living, and the proposal here before the council is for low-density residential. There has been no natural justice conflicts in the change, because every rural living zoned lot within the area has been developed for residential purposes, and these particular lots are actually about the, the other smaller lot sizes within the area. The other point I'd like to make is that it is consistent with the state policy, because the low-density residential zone would provide infill opportunities and development for residential purposes, and it's a more effective use of infrastructure and road frontage, in particular for the property or the access of four to in Driftwood Drive. It's interesting that the lots eight and fourteen are all sub-minimal lots, significantly below the two hectare lots prescribed by the application of rural living area B, and proposed, and therefore rural living zone uses are incompatible with the character of the area. So you have very, very small lots, and in the case of properties eight, Driftwood Drive, and fourteen, Driftwood Drive, are approximately point nine six hectares and one point two hectare respectively. So they are all sub-minimal lots, significantly below the two hectare, contrary to that being proposed for inclusion in the rural living area B. And we're also well aware that at one of our recent meetings, we approved a development at Possum Bay, and those lot sizes are within that particular zone, and they are of a nature which are really compatible with what the existing lots at number eight and number fourteen, Driftwood Drive are... Are at that scale and I can repeat again that the properties at eight Driftwood Drive and fourteen Driftwood Drive are approximately point nine six. You know, one, basically one and one point two hectares. So why wouldn't we consider having a, uh, a change to this so that there is a conformity with the adjoining lots? And you have at the moment, two of these particular lots which are adjacent to small lots which are within the low density and, um. Within the, uh, low density residential area and then on the other hand, you, they've maintained it, it just means that they would remain in the rural, uh, the rural, um. What do we call it? Rural, um. Within the rural, uh, living zone. So I see council's support to right the wrong, to actually allow these to be brought into the envelope that exists, abutting these two properties and seek council's support.
Thank you, Alderman Moller.
Uh, yes, um, not to say too much, except, um, the one issue there I think is, um, um, more development, uh, more problems for, um, Spit Farm Road. And might I say, um, just, and more impetus for us to revisit the Bodega Court access through the, uh, through the, back to, um, to take the pressure off Bodega Road, off, um. Just Spit Farm Road with a, with a proper road, so, um, rezoning this, um, does, uh, put some impetus back to us, but that alternative to Spit Farm Road is something we desperately, uh, need to have a look at. Uh, because it's only a matter of time before some, uh, before a coroner serves it up to us big time.
Other speakers?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to read from the officer's, uh, recommendation or report. Uh, it says, under straws, Possum Bay is identified in table three as a dormitory suburb with a very low growth strategy achieved through consolidation. This is clarified, um, to mean no new potential dwellings except single dwellings on existing lots. Accordingly, before the proposal could be considered under straws, it would be necessary to first amend the straws through a revised growth strategy for Possum Bay. The proposal is contrary to the straws and to Lupa. Additionally, it has broader implications for the strategic planning of Greater Hobart and is not supported. So I believe as a planning authority, looking at strategic matter, I can't support this.
Thank you, other speakers? We'll put the vote, oh, Alderman Ewing.
Oh, I'd just like to add, I mean, look, you know, having those little pockets of bits and pieces all over the place, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me, I mean, I know there's issues, but look, we can pick issues up in any. Uh, development and a lot of places where roads need to be improved or things need to be done better, but at the end of the day, um, you know, it just does, it's not, you know, I can't see how we could have, you know. Higher, higher density residential, then rural living and the gap in between, it just doesn't make sense, so, uh, you know, once again, people want to live there, so I think we should, uh. Um, and in the long term, it'll give us the right base to actually deal with some of the issues in relation to the roads down there and actually help us, uh, make that something more likely to occur because we've got more people using the road, so I would support, um, you know, this, this motion.
Thank you, uh, the motion as proposed, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, against, motion is carried. And moving on to the last motion, number thirteen. Uh, in regard to rezoning land at Port and Sixth Page Court to inner residential, Alderman Ewing. Do we have a second there? Uh, Alderman appears, Alderman Ewing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, look, I, I've, you know, I've mentioned this before at other times in front of, uh, you know, fellow Alderman here, I mean, you know, you look at Clarence, we really haven't got much. Well, actually, no, I'll start with the beginning in terms of what, what the representatives submitted there, I think that's important. Um, the parcel of land that, um, in Page Court, um, it's got sloping topography, um, side of a hill, it's close to bus stops, close to eastlands, close to services. Um, and the, the, um, the owners think that it'd make, uh, a good place to develop for, you know, medium, high density apartment style development. Uh, because it's close to eastlands, close to, uh, you know, shops, transport and all those sort of things and I think just on that, you know, I certainly think that's a, that's a valid response from them. You know, you look at the eastern shore and we really haven't had any apartment buildings, uh, built in, in Clarence, I mean, we've got Almond Street, which should be, you know, and I remember that being there when I was in infant school, so, you know, there, there's really no, you know, high density apartments. Um, and the only one I can think of is one that I think we all probably would, probably would have liked to see there, but that one, um, in more recent times, but you know, Wentworth Park, Little Haribees, you know, that's really the only smaller apartments that we've got, you know, in Clarence. Um, and, and the thing that we need to remember is that there needs to be an entry point into the market, which is not always a four bedroom house with two cars, two bathrooms and on a, you know, six, seven hundred meter square block and even, you know, even the high density they're talking about here with a. A, a unit on three hundred and twenty-five metres, I mean, some people don't want a backyard at all. Um, and I think it, it's important for us to create that entry level point for some people to, to buy a smaller studio that's in department block, that's a single person that doesn't need a lot of space. Who wants the opportunity to get into the market and see that, that capital going over a period of time, which is then a stepping stone into something else and I think not only in this location, but I think seriously as a council, we need to be looking at identifying some places. Where we think this might happen now, I know we've talked about Moraine as being somewhere that we, we might be looking to support those sort of things and, and there's some other places that have come up in discussion. But I think that is a really important, you know, thing that we have a responsibility to not just say that it's all going to be the same, you know, I certainly don't think, you know, we need some innovation out there. Um, I mean, there's some negative issues that were raised by the council staff in relation to traffic, but I mean, look, the amount of traffic that goes up Binlon Road every day is, is, you know, is a lot. Um, you know, there's, there's turn offs off Cambridge Road all the way along, so I mean, the amount of traffic going in there, I don't think is going to make a huge difference. Um, dealing with wheeling bins and all that sort of stuff, I mean, ultimately it comes down to whoever develops this, if it's the owners of the land or they, um, go to someone else. The market will take care of those sort of things to make sure that there is adequate parking, that there is a reasonable place to store your bin nearby, um, because if they don't, well, people won't buy them, so. You know, I think it's not up to us to overanalyze all these things and come up with all the solutions because that's what the responsible people have to come up with ways of, of making money out of these things, um, and they will do that. Um, you know, it's inside the, obviously it's inside the urban growth boundary because it's, uh, more consistent, uh, rezoning the properties has one of the council, one of the staff have said that it's consistent with the, um. Um, S T R L U S, I'll do it that way rather than trying to come up with my own version of it. And I mean, I think, uh, you know, there's still an opportunity regardless of what, whether, you know, if we get the support to do this now. There's still a bit of water under the bridge to deal with all these issues and the, and the natural justice issues of the other landowners around to get their opportunity to have their two bobs worth, so I think it's, uh, you know, it's a piece of land that, that. Is not going to work as a couple of residential blocks and I think it's an opportunity for us to, you know, give these guys a chance to, um, come up with some innovative ways to create different types of housing in our city, which I think is really important, so I encourage everyone to support this one.
Thank you, Alderman appears.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, like all these decisions tonight, I'll give a lot of thought going up there, I thought this is the ideal place to increase density, there's no risk of that. I don't always agree with the simple solutions and sometimes, uh, you know, some of them can come up with, but I think this is the ideal swipe forward, I really do. And, uh, you know, as Alderman Ewing has said, you know, we can certainly look at other places, they've all got their, their pros and cons, but, uh, I think this is a good starting point, I really do, because it's close to all the services that are needed by people and I do agree with Alderman Ewing, not everyone, anyone wants a backyard, they just want a place to live, so this is a good start on.
Other speakers, Alderman Walker?
Uh, thank you, and I will be supporting this, uh, I mean, uh, as far as the issue of bins goes, uh, as someone that's been in a little bit of my life living in a complex for about one hundred and fifty years. What you often find the solution is in, in more dead things is that rather than actually having the council green waste recycling and regular bins, that there's actually two or three, uh, smaller sized bins at one time, there are, there are ways for that. And, um, one of the things that's, uh, the use of this zone is really important with Clarence is the opportunity for people to age in place. Um, a lot of our topography isn't flat and people, uh, a lot of people fall out in the early seventies, late sixties, late fifties, um, and they've got connections there, they've got social connections, they've got service connections to doctors, pharmacists. Um, and I know the local area, I found when I was working in Kingborough, I would be occasionally, uh, treating patients that had to move because of a partner had broken it and the house was suddenly not working and all of a sudden they had to move and the only option for them was somewhere twenty k's away, away from all that social infrastructure, so. Tonight the biggest loser, loser through this process has been around, um, the use of this zone and that's, that's more homework for this council. Finding a way that we can, uh, use it in, in existing sort of communities so that people have that option to age in place without overwhelming the, the, the style and nature of things is, is a challenge to us moving forward, something we've got to step up to the mark of. Um, there's a lot of friction in our community and around some of the development that occurs just in general residential because of the nature of these blocks where, um, it's a very easy algorithm to do. Two garage, four bedroom townhouse in what was once a backyard and that is creating friction, a part of that is occurring because the way that the zoning is setting up, the options for the, you know, if you like, the note, the smaller scale downsizing already, it just isn't there, so. I hope it will be a start of this process, um, but it is something that, that we should be moving forward on, so I very likely support it.
Thank you, other speakers? Alderman Moller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, just a couple of points is that the rezoning of Page Court for Rain, the request was to modify it to general residential, the office was quite glad to point out it already is residential. But, um, the text of the representation indicated they were talking about higher density general residential, which actually means inner residential. So, um, you know, in fact, the officers, um, have commented on the, on the thing with the properties already zone residential or turn this out, rezoning inner residential or introduce an S S Q related to increased density. Uh, if so much how they've identified the issues as Page Court intersection and public entrance, which of course, um, both those issues, uh, you know, the Page Court intersection, that's one thing for Cambridge Road. Uh, if only we were to get on with the Lord of Vale ramps and we might have to reduce some of the traffic on Cambridge Road, but, um, I don't think they are showstoppers and certainly it is. Can I say that, um, the inner residential zone is designed for places that are characteristic, characterized by high density, uh, with a greater presence of non-housing activity. Um, proximity activity centres with a range of services and facilities, well, here we are, Moraine, lots of, uh, activities and services, very close walking distance to, um, the Rosney Park C V D. Um, the other point is it's located along high frequency public transport corridors, well, I reckon there'd be a bus running down, um, Cambridge Road every ten minutes. Um, so it ticks all the boxes in terms of the zoning guidelines, it also, um, is what the, um, the officers, um, indicated that is a possibility with it, um, and, um, and therefore it goes. Having said that, um, I wouldn't like to be under a pandemic house arrest in an apartment and I would hate for kids to be there, you would go stir crazy. Um, and, uh, you know, and, and where we, where I would probably have been in my middle, suppose if I hadn't been able to get out in the backyard and potter around with a few building works and doing something, I don't know, but that's me. Um, and, uh, and, uh, I'm not going to buy one of those apartments, but that doesn't mean people who want to shouldn't be able to, so I would wholeheartedly support it.
Any other speakers? In that case, I'll put the motion, all those in favor? Against, uh, the motion is carried. So where we're at now is that, uh, the table, the motion before the chair is the officer's recommendation as modified by one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, missing out on seven, eight. Nine is in, ten is out, eleven is out, but eleven point one is in and twelve point thirteen are in. So, uh, that's the motion that's on the table, it's being moved, uh, by Alderman Walker, who has a right of reply after the debate. The second, uh, has reserved their right of reply, uh, so, um, the floor's up and a regular debate on the consolidated motion. Alderman Moller.
First of all, can I acknowledge the, um, the incredible amount of work that the, uh, the planning staff have gone on, gone into on this particular one and, um, and, and having done a, a bit of work of reviewing only some of their work. I can thoroughly understand why it took the three months of work to get to this thing, so to be utterly commended, the hard work and the effort, and I hope they don't take any offence at the fact that maybe I haven't always agreed with them as, um, as, as, as we will get used to in politics, that, um, some days, um, you've got your advice.
I, I'd be willing to entertain a further amendment that includes a congressional, so thanks for the start.
Well, I would, I would move that amendment if it's.
I would.
Okay, thanks.
I might also like to say I probably deserve a bit of a pat on the back myself because I could, uh, I could.
Well, I was actually going to include that, but not the motion, Alderman Moller.
Well, we wouldn't want the public record underlining that, would we there? And thank you for your interjection, I'm welcome. But, um, no, I think that it's been a great exercise and I will reiterate here that, um, we are only providing advice, we aren't the decision makers. And with our advice and, and that's the point of which we represent the community and where they have put together valid planning reasons and, and issues. Um, one of the issues that I'd like, that I'd sort of highlight, um, in the process is that when we're acting as a planning authority, we are acting almost like the regulators. We, we aren't in a position now, this is the law, these are the things, this is what we have to follow. When we get to this strategic stuff, that's the time that we have to be starting to think outside of this square, within the broad policy parameters, but we're not, I don't think it's appropriate. That we as elected representatives, when we're talking about the actual structure of the scheme. I for one am sick to death of, um, having people come to me and complain about a decision that we have been made and some of them aren't too nice about it, right, when in the fact, when in the end, we didn't have any alternative. That was what it was, that's what it complied with and, um, as Crumorne Avenue picks his head up, but here is an opportunity for us to have an impact on that planning scheme and on those things. And the objectives under the Lupa are that there'll be engagement with the community and that there'll be engagement with local government and this is the best time when we're setting up these schemes for us to go and put our views forward. If they're not acceptable to the planning commission and they do something different or they go along with another particular line, then it's on their heads and it's on their accountability because I for one am sick to death of being blamed for decisions that other people have made, so. Um, all I can say is that I think the debate has been very good mostly, um, I think it's been a little bit heated and passionate, but perhaps too much at times, uh, but that's the nature sometimes, I think, of, of debate. But it's been sensibly conducted and I must, I, I compliment, um, all the speakers that have been there tonight on, um. Having done their homework, having looked at the issues and, uh, and, uh, been generally relevant to the issues at hand, um, and, uh, so whatever the TPC makes of this, I am satisfied that everyone around this chamber and the planning staff. Have all gone above and beyond to produce what we see today, so, um, thank you very much and I, uh, I will be endorsing the, uh, the amendment of the.
Other speakers?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just ask a question of either the general manager or Mr. Lovell? Is that possible?
Sure, it's part of your timer, but, uh.
Yep, I, I'm, that's all I want to actually ask.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't want to say anything further. Um, am I correct in my understanding that there will be considerable expense in hiring independent experts to support successful Alderman recommendations? Which are contrary to the officer's recommendations as the officers would actually be conflicted if they were to take on the task?
May I, General Manager?
Thank you for the question, I might actually ask Mr. Lovell to, or Mr. Ford to answer that, they may be able to provide some more, uh, detail than I can.
Through Mr. Mayor, um, the procedure will be, um, for those, um, decisions which weren't in accordance with the officer's recommendation. We are to ensure that they're given a red hot go at the, at the commission, so, um, we would need to engage external parties to do it, so there's no potential conflict of interest or no, um. Exposure of council staff to the commission who might ask questions which don't help the council, so we will be engaging appropriate experts, um, we'll need to review now what experts we need for those matters. Um, we will most likely use, uh, council's lawyer, uh, and we will, uh, most likely engage a planning consultant, uh, and we'll, and we'll take advice from the lawyer as to whether we need. An engineer, for example, or some other party, so we'll work through that now, but there will be certain expenses involved, um, in order to ensure that, that every council decision is given as a red hot go.
Thanks for stopping. Um, Alderman Ewing?
I'll just quickly, um, you know, being someone that isn't always complimentary towards bureaucrats, I, I'll have to turn around and acknowledge the evidence. I have to turn and acknowledge the effort that Dan and Ross put in on, and as you put your part in very important role, I know this would have been a hell of a lot of work. Whether it's too lucky to have a beer at the end of the night, if not, I hope to sit back and relax and enjoy a bit of peace for a couple of hours at least anyway. We're obviously disappointed with a couple of the outcomes tonight, but I mean, that's the moment, you know, we sat down, we argued our case, we're not always going to agree and that's, that's the nature of the beast. But I think, you know, I think overall, you know, it's been a learning experience for me to go through this process, and, you know, I think we got some really good outcomes tonight, and I acknowledge the efforts that everyone's put in. And I also want to say thank you, Tony, you did put in a lot of, a lot of work with this, and I think, you know, I think, you know, it's not necessarily every outcome right, but I think, you know, overall, I think we done pretty good job. Well done, everyone.
Thank you. Other speakers? In that case, Alden. Well, Alderman Edmonds first, then. Oh, okay. Alden John, please just speak.
Thank you. Look, I will be very brief, I am not going to rehash anything we've talked about tonight. I just wanted to say I'm very happy that the motion's been amended to recognize the contributions and stuff because I cannot imagine how many hours have gone into all of this work and the probably very good sleep nights because it certainly at times have been very good for helping sleep. I think we should also recognize the hundred and seven representations that were put in. That's, that's a lot of work on behalf of the right payers and property owners in our city, and I think they have also put in a lot of work in this. And I guess for me, it comes down a little bit to like voting on the budget. I don't agree with everything that we passed tonight, I voted against some of them, but overall, I think we've got to a good place. And I think from that point of view, we need to support the recommendation with the modifications that have been approved.
Thank you. Right reply, Alden Walker.
Yes, thank you. I use the forward to five, I'm going to.
You only get three on a right reply.
The only certainty is that the recommend, the modifications recommended, the only certainty of that is none of us agree that they were the right ones that should have gone, or that is unified, I can't. Irrespective of that, this mechanism, as laborious as it might be, allowed every Alderman who, all of us have had a lot of time and, you know, agonized over certain ones, a chance to express those concerns or those enthusiasms, and sometimes, you know, that was successful a lot of times at once. So it's been truncated, this was certainly the, I think, the right way to go forward. So as I now vote, it's my intention to vote, hey, man, I'm doing so, you know, disagreeing with a lot of what's going forward, a decent chunk of it, but irrespective of the democratic process in which it happened, and again, it's already been made, but I appreciate it all times, not just the depth of advice that the staff have offered, but their candor, their candor to just tell it as they believe it was. Thanks again.
Thank you. So the motion is the officer's recommendation as amended through the process, including an appreciation of the staff and Mr. Ford in particular.
Would you like that as part of the recommendation or a note at the end after the recommendation?
It's got to be in the motion. So on, well, does that complicate it going to the commission?
I think it probably does.
Okay, well, we'll take it as a note in the minute.
A procedural motion to move another motion.
Yeah, okay, we'll take part B, we'll take it as part B, a second motion, separate from the LPX.
Number five, yeah, yeah, thanks, Sam.
We'll take it as a part B, and we've got it as a part B. So all those in favor? Against? Of the consolidated motion?
The amended motion to the planning methods?
No, no.
Oh, look, I'll put the vote again. So the motion before the chair that we're voting on is the officer's recommendation as amended, that's part A, part B is our appreciation of the staff.
Well, I want to appreciate the staff.
All right, well, we'll take the second motion on that. Moved? Was that seconded?
Yes.
Thank you. So we're voting on the motion.
Well, I'd like to spend a little bit of time with that question now we put.
So this vote is on the. Part A, which is the motion as amended, all those in favor? Against? The motion is carried, part B, our appreciation of the staff, Mr. Ford in particular, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And can I add, in general, with the theme that's been around, look, thank you all very much for the way you've approached this, it's been a mega effort. It certainly required us to have a special council meeting, given the time that it's taken, but it has enabled us to work through the whole process very diligently, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to participate in that. Thank you. And congratulations, Tony, for the work that you did in your.